Okay, yeah, next time we need to -- okay. So it's back to council for deliberation, and I'm sure we all have lots of things to say. Hopefully, we'll all be succinct and not repeat what other people have said. So, John, would you like to go first or not as the junior member?
So, first, a few opening comments that over the past almost a year, but eight, 10 months, the Regnar Creek Trail has been a topic that's been brought to us even before we were officially We've listened to, or at least I can only speak for myself, I've listened to everybody that has wanted to talk to me about it. I've walked it multiple times, attended each of the meetings to really get a feel for what the residents' pros, cons, concerns are. And now I want to kind of go just a little bit off-topic there. To me, every resident's view is important. Every resident's view is equally weighted. And so, I'd really like to ask that we all treat everybody with respect and respect everybody's opinion that's even different from our own. I think it's okay to refute or state what you believe to be a correction of what somebody else said, but I get very disappointed when there's characters, character insinuations made about other residents. Everybody's view is valid to them. I don't believe anybody is actively falsifying or, maybe it's not entirely true, but everybody is truly wanting to express their own opinion, and they have a right to do that. And I believe they have a right to do that without having things said about them that are just not nice things. I think we all owe all of our residents due respect, and when that happens, that we all respect everybody, at the end of the day, at the end of the decision, we're all friends. We're all a community, and we, no one person gets everything that they want. And so, I would just ask that going forward on contentious issues, we try very hard to respect everybody's differing opinions. So, with that kind of behind us, then, for deliberations on this, I feel that safety is at the top of almost everybody's list of issues. And, well, safety, the trail would move some bicycle miles to an off-road situation, so that's a safety aspect. That's something that needs to be, you know, high on the list. How many bicycle miles would be moved off? You know, we don't know. Safety, having something open, close to somebody's house, close to somebody's front door, it's a safety issue that we need to at least consider. Safety, if the kids are out there, even on a sunny day, near a steep embankment, I know my three-year-old, if I were to turn around and he was on an embankment like that, it's likely he would have gone too close, closer than he should have been, and go down. I do catch him stepping into the street. He knows he's not supposed to. So, that's safety. The storm runoff and the high water and the rushing water, again, if somebody winds up too close and they slide down because it's a slippery surface. Should there be lighting, you know, in an area like that? The small section that's near Creekside Park is lit, and should that be done here? Well, I'll at least take a couple of these that are safe. I think that, safety issues, I do think that we need to make sure that we have adequate fencing along the steep embankments, along areas where the walkway is close to where the water would be if it's wintertime and there is runoff. There's the conceivable process of closing the gate, but is it always going to get closed at the right time? So, one of my top priorities would be that we need that fencing to ensure that our kids and adults that are walking are not going to inadvertently fall down the embankment. So, when we look at these different options, I would be pushed to say that the options that I would find acceptable need to have the embankment fencing. There's the concern about crime and things that might go on back there. In previous meetings, city staff has said they have talked to the sheriff. The sheriff's department is aware, and that they would be providing adequate supervision. Would it be foolproof? Well, probably not, but we do need to be very concerned that we are aware of that. Safety at the street crossings mid-street, where, at the corners where you have stop signs and you have stoplights, there's still the possibility of a bicyclist, you know, teenagers do what teenagers do, and they don't see any cars, and so, you know, they just keep on riding. It's a stop sign, even at a stoplight, there's no cars. But at least at the intersections, the vehicle drivers are aware to approach an intersection to look very carefully. And so, the mid-street crossings, I think, need to be very, very well addressed. Staff has told us that there'll be the lighted indicators with push buttons so that the bike or pedestrian people would be able to hit the button, flash the light. We actually have those. I live on Tilson and Tantaw, Sedgwick, where my kids go. Fortunately, we do have that type of a crossing, mid-street, so that it does get heavily used. It's not quite mid-street because it's a T at that one intersection. It's Barnhart and Tantaw. And so, I do see that those things do work and work well, and when they do hit the buttons and the lights flash, the traffic does stop. Tantaw is much slower traffic. I think it's 25 in there, but because it's in front of a school, traffic typically is much slower. When we did the Regnar Creek walks, the traffic on Blaney is quite fast. And so, I think the bulbouts that the city staff has been recommending that will at least alert drivers that, hey, you need to navigate a narrower section, hopefully would bring that speed down. But that might also create more of a traffic problem for the amount of traffic that needs to be flowing on Blaney. So, these types of issues, staff needs to be very careful when they do these. The unintended consequences, you know, if the intended one is that you put the flashing light, you protect the bike and pedestrian, but the unintended consequences, is it going to impede and actually cause more traffic congestion at the same time? Safety's first and foremost, but we need to be aware of the other consequences. Privacy, I definitely understand the privacy. I like privacy. I think we all realize that houses all have front yards with walkways. Most all are sidewalks. A lot of the houses over by Mona Vista actually don't have sidewalks, but there is going to be pedestrians walking, there are going to be bicycles. Front yard setbacks are typically 20 feet. Backyard setbacks to the fence are also 20, 20 feet. So, I think the privacy is important, the fences, how high the fence should be, the fact that there are some areas next to the creek which rise up above the height of the land for the houses, which means bicycle and pedestrian people walking there would be elevated and perhaps able to see over the fences. So, the fences need to be addressed, that it's at least going to address the privacy Thoroughness of the overall analysis that's been done, while it's been a considerable length of time, the thoroughness that has been done, wow, there's been an awful lot. I think we all can agree, boy, there's been a lot, a lot of outreach, a lot of discussion, a lot of different options. Two bridges, one bridge, wood fence, wall fence, railing to the creek, leaving it open all the time versus closing it at night. I would like to have seen that a lot more of those decisions would have been more strongly taken care of by now. A wall versus a wood fence for the privacy, it's not as easy as just saying, well, if they want the wall fence, they'll get the wall versus the wood fence. Unless staff can convince me otherwise, you just can't have one house that has a wood fence, and then you've got a house with a concrete wall, and then you have a house with a wood fence. I don't think it's right to force the wood, the concrete fence on the houses that they're comfortable with a wood fence, and they actually like the wood appearance as opposed to the feeling of a confined space behind a wall. So, I struggle with what is the right decision, how many of the residents are truly comfortable with new, higher wood fence versus the wall. I struggle a little bit with the ranking, being technical and an engineer, you know, plan. It's expected of me in my day job to make sure I do a thorough job of planning. When we fail to plan, we're planning to fail. That's an interesting catchphrase. And so, to me, I put a lot of faith in the bicycle plan that was done in 2016, and I wasn't on the council at that time, so I have to take it at face value, like we have to take a lot of things in life at face value. And if that is our bicycle plan and the ranking of them, the natural expectation would be that you start at the top of the list and you work your way down. When you hit one that has kind of an impediment, like cost, if drop on down to one like McClellan, and the cost is so high that it can't be readily done at the current time, and then you move on to the next one. And so, I struggle a little bit with how the Regnar Creek did in fact get pushed up above so many. If these other ones were truly deemed to have more of an importance for bicycle safety, I would like to have seen us do a lot more in terms of bicycle safety. Here we are, 2019, and that plan was made in 2016. What do we have to show as finished products in 2019 when McClellan is just kind of still in the initial phase? It's late in terms of getting finished up, and school has started. So, I struggle with those things. I'm more or less kind of conveying how I'm wrestling in making the overall decision. Next, we get to the Water District, and the Water, a Water District person was here, and I would like to have had them come and make a few comments. If they have truly outstanding concerns, it would have meant a lot to me to hear from them directly if they were at a point where they could say, we have agreed to all the things that are in the Regnar Creek proposal, A, B, C, or D, or E, which ones are or aren't up to their satisfaction? Are there anything that hasn't been addressed? And hearing it from them directly, to me, would have gone a long ways. I wish we could have captured that before the person left. But I'll rely on staff and saying that they feel that the Water District has agreed to everything. There's still a few troubling points on Lozano Lane, and whether or not the Water District would deed back a foot of land so that a sufficient wall barrier could be in place for those. And then we get down to kind of one of the most important ones. I mean, we are the stewards of everyone in this city's tax dollars. We have a lot of passionate residents here, and a lot of them have already gone home at so late. But we are stewards of 68,000 residents' money, and I'm wanting to be very, very cautious with spending that money, and I would want to be more conservative as opposed to more aggressive with spending that without having the whole community truly know what we're contemplating. We may not get input back, but letting them all know to what degree. If we back up, I think it was two months ago, with the new City Hall proposal and the library expansion, I felt that was my first real contribution to the city. When Mayor Scharf said, John, why don't you go first? And I said, I've seen how much public outpouring there is for the library. I see it firsthand when we take our three young kids to the library and we get the DVDs for them, and it occupies them when we go on road trips and stuff. And so, I made the recommendation to take $5 million of our reserves and put it toward the $10 to $11 million bill that would be required for the library expansion. Don't do that lightly. $5 million is coming out of the entire community's reserve for one project, but the number of people that use the library, the overload on the current library, the library staff coming and telling us that there are people, there are residents sitting on the steps inside the library because there's no more chairs available. And so, rising to the issue there and putting $5 million. So, now, the cost of the different options that we have in front of us, with the highest one being more than what we allocated for the library, is very difficult to get behind that much. If we're down, $2 million is a lot. $2 million, $3 million is a lot. If we have the full fencing between the creek, if we have at least full replacement of the wood fencing, possibly with higher fences in areas, if the issues are truly covered, the grading issues, the ability of the ground to absorb the water, and what are we doing about the drainage? And so, those seem to be pretty well-covered. $2.3 million for option C, $2.5. The chart I'm looking at is what I've been reviewing over the last days and weeks, not the one that was presented tonight. So, these numbers I'm more comfortable reading from. The option C, $2.3 million. The option B, which is still not the wall fence, $2.5 million. A lot of money there. Going beyond that, going beyond the $2.3 million, I think, really needs to get money from some of the possible grants. And we don't have that information tonight, but I think that if the city staff is allowed to go with another $200,000 to come to a final recommendation on these things and find out if they can get grant money to go to a higher level. If during that period of time, they still are not able to come to an agreement with the community for less than the full wall that pushes the price up to $5 million or over $5 million, then I think more options need to be explored in how to fund that, and if it means spreading it out over a longer time. Really focusing more on the bike projects that are going to provide safety today for our kids in other areas. I don't want to see those things delayed because we're using too much of our budget. I just don't see that we need, that we should be taking money out of reserves for the whole community at this point in time. So, those are my concerns. I'm happy to now sit back and listen without a decision made yet. I think you can tell from what I've just said. I'm still trying to figure out what's the right decision for the city, and now if I let the other councilmen speak to the things they find need to be addressed, or the information that they have, and how staff will answer, I won't expect staff to address mine directly because maybe there's more that will overlay, overlap, need to be addressed at the same time. So, Mayor, I'll turn the --
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Who would like to go next? Council members, hmm? Councilmember Sykes. Go.
Well, thank you. I do respect everybody that's spoken tonight. I know people are passionate on both sides of this. I do have some history with access and fences. I back up to Kennedy Middle School, and my kids went out the gates and had access to school without having to go on any but one crossing through all their time through high school, and found that of great virtue, and felt that that was a safe environment for them. And, you know, well, I just, I grimaced and thought about all of the folks who came tonight to talk about their incidents, or their kids' incidents with biking around and then having that accident, and changed, shut down a career, changed the course of a life. I had a kid on his way to high school that was hit in front of my house a few years ago, friend of the family, and we, I think, we have to decide how important walking and biking and creating better connectivity is to us. Like John, I have a lot of respect for that 2016 bike plan. It came out of, yeah, a lot of energy in the wake of that 2014 death, and it was really designed to give us a comprehensive network. Trails that worked for children and adults and commuters, and so, we have a whole variety of these things going on. And I think somebody said, let's be a city with a soul. So, I do think we have to think about what we want this place to be. The way Cupertino was designed, we don't have great connectivity. I think, I think we ought to do, we have to do the hard things that help us get connected. I was talking to the Air District's Grants Administrator last night, and had her speak with Roger about her experience. She said, you know, we talk a lot about wanting to reduce car trips to schools, for example, and in Almedon Valley, she said, where my parents used to live, there's masses of cars that hang out at schools, idling, waiting for their turn to drop their kid off in the morning, and waiting to pick them up in the afternoon. It's certainly been an issue on my, where I live, forever, and to the great frustration of everybody. And through all my time on the council, we've thought a lot about, how do you get kids to walk and bike to school? What are the things that matter? So, we started a walk-bike program. Hired for that and are trying to do better. And we looked at cities that do much better than the law. And we looked at cities that do much better than the likes of Almond Valley. We looked to Palo Alto, we looked to Menlo Park. She said, my parents have moved to Menlo Park. And there the culture is really different. They really have changed this so that it's an expectation that your kid is going to walk or bike to school. And so I suppose that the child that is driven, you know, in the Lexus and the Mercedes may really have a feeling like they're not conforming to the new norm there, which seems to be, yeah, you're going to get to school by that means. And we don't have to necessarily compare ourselves, but I do think we can think about where we want to be on that continuum. And this trail won't be used simply by folks that want to go to school. I think it'll be used by folks that want to get around town for a whole variety of reasons. But it's clear that with the popularity of our library, this place is a real destination in the city. And so I think we just have to do better. I think we have to do this trail. I do, I have, John, like you, I have sticker shock. I'm struggling to think that we would go with A or B. And I'm thinking that D is a good option. I talked to a lot of folks that bike more regularly than me and commute. And I asked them, I said, so how do you feel about biking on a surface of decomposed granite? Maybe sprayed with a binder, maybe not. And I think everybody feels pretty good about it. If you, if you're a hardcore biker and you want to go as fast as possible, this is probably not your alignment anyway, right? But if you're going for most purposes, this is a good surface. I asked about, how does the water district, I asked staff, how does the water district feel about this plan at this point? Because frankly, it was troubling to get a letter from the water district back in August a year ago, little over a year ago, where we were so out of alignment. And it sounds to me like they really like the unpaved surface, the decomposed granite, because it allows percolation into the aquifer without us having to do something pretty sophisticated. That is a full improvement underground. I think it's a responsible option. I think it gets us in at a price tag of twenty-one hundred. And I frankly would suggest that we don't need to spend a hundred and seventy-five of that two point one million for a parallel alignment on the street. I don't think that's necessary. I think we could focus on just Regnar Creek Trail, make that the best thing we can be. I do think that if we're really going to get kids and parents of kids to feel like this is a safe environment with only a twelve-foot width, I think along the houses on the backside of Lamar, it makes a lot of sense to put a rail up there. And I know there are other trails that, you know, where that's not done. But I think that would, it would be appropriate to make that investment. Whereas in that other section of trail on the west side, I don't think we need to do that. I think we have a wide, much wider berth there. I did have one question for staff. And that is, for the folks that live on De Palma that are concerned that, you know, this would be an issue for folks going east to make sure that they're following the trail alignment rather than going down that private street, is there anything that the water district or public safety agencies would do to say, you know, we can't put up some sort of barrier guide or whatever to keep people on the trail as opposed to going off on a private street?
Yes, we could delineate that area with channelizers. David has a term called a worn-off, where you have a raised area that is passable by a car. But it would channelize pedestrians and bicycles to stay within the trail. It wouldn't prohibit valley water from having access to their area.
Okay, so we have a tool, we have a piece of civil engineering for that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, after listening, I've also come to many of the workshops and heard from a lot of folks. And I remember the whole scenic circle debate that we had in the city and how upset people were about that gate open and that path that we put in. And, you know, what's interesting to me is how after some time, and I've heard other stories up the Stevens Creek Trail, how after a while, the trail begins to become an amenity. I really appreciate what staff has done in getting creative with valley water in saying, okay, well, you know, we have this ramp up and down and this awkward bridge issue, and we don't want to impact the ball field and so forth. So my understanding of these alternatives now is that we would put in a new ramp, correct me if I'm wrong, we would put in a new ramp on the north side from the Wilson parking lot that would give valley water access. And that would allow us to take out the ramp on the south side and let that trail go all the way down the backside of Lamar.
Correct.
Then you say, well, so we don't need any bridge. But having connectivity to Wilson Park, I think, is such an amenity and of such high value for folks that might want to tee off and go that way or come or go, that I think it's a great addition and I think we ought to do that, too. But, yeah, I struggle with four point eight or three point two million. I do think that D is a responsible option. I don't see us upgrading this to a paved trail in the future and therefore a fully paved trail. And therefore, I think, at least for the well-foreseeable future, it makes sense not to invest in a rather expensive underdrain system. I'm sure that would have to be, I know we'll have some maintenance of the crushed or the decomposed gravel, but we'd also have some maintenance of a fancy drainage system, right? You'd have to keep those drains clear and so forth. So, anyway, that's what I'm thinking at this point.
Can I just step back in? So the two point one, two point three million, does that, because the moving of the ramps is something that's new to me.
Yeah.
Is the two point one...
I think it is pretty new, yeah.
Two point one, two point three that's on the chart covering the moving of the ramps? And then the second question, the old ramps with the two bridges seemed awfully awkward that those things had to be lifted with a crane, a truck with a boom on it...
Right.
Off so that they could do it. Now, if the ramp has been moved, the bridge that would allow the connectivity, does that mean it doesn't have to be removed so that they can get their truck along that? So those two questions, is the new configuration covered in that? I mean, you went from two bridges that maybe were covered in that, but redoing those ramps with concrete and reinforcement seems pretty expensive, too.
Yeah, so all options A through E have the single bridge in there and relocation of the ramps. So that's, that is all-inclusive. It does still need to be, remain removable. That's a valley water requirement. It's more likely that they will not be needing the bridge removed as often because with the ramp moved to the north side, their access is better. And they've indicated that the bridge would not be, needed to be removed nearly as often as we had with the two bridges.
And I mean, the benefit to a trail user, obviously, is you can go, if you're just trying to traverse the backside of Lamar, you can do that. But then if you really want to go over to Wilson Park, yeah, you take the T. But I think we can find a bridge that's, you don't have, the trail doesn't have to zigzag around to one side and then the other in this scenario. The only time you're on a bridge is if you want to take that T. Right? Yeah?
Okay, Vice Mayor.
No, Darcy wanted to go last. Okay, so, because I have a presentation. So first of all, I'd like to clarify. Someone says that I was interrupting the staff. Actually, I think it's common practice that before the public comments, we are supposed to ask clarifying questions so that property can clearly understand the staff. When staff didn't explain something accurately or clearly, I was trying to help. Okay, and this is common practice. We do that in school board, too. And I wasn't expressing my opinion. I was trying to help to understand the situation. I hope that's a practice the city council will adopt. And because if I don't ask right at that moment, if I wait until everyone have given their five-hour comment, then... I forgot my answers. And that people also would have confusing information, okay? And I'd like to say, I signed the petition for the trail before I learned about the many issues, before I learned about the city budget, before I got elected to the council. Who wouldn't support a trail? Of course I would support a trail. I signed that. Yes, like Jennifer showed, it's very simple, the petition. Do you want to support the trail that has so many benefits? So many people signed it. But is this really a trail? I, my son, I have two boys. My older boy, he rides bicycle to Lawson since he was in middle school and then he rides to Cupertino High. And he would often come back home, especially during summer, pretty late at night after studying or playing at a friend's house, sometimes ten, eleven o'clock at night. At one time, it was like one o'clock. So, and my younger boy, he is in an alternative program. So we carpool ever since he was in middle school. So I haven't seen the busy traffic in schools for many years because we always drop them off one block away from schools. And as a family, we love biking. Ever since they were young, we have bike rack. We take them to Los Gatos Creek Trail, Coyote Creek Trail, but not on Cupertino until they are in middle or high school. But still, we go to Health Moon Bay to bike. So those trails are great because you can ride on it for hours. And my boys will be way ahead of me. I don't have to worry about them running off, hitting a street with dangerous vehicles. But are we looking at a trail here? Is this Regnar Creek drainage trench ever, will that ever be a part of a creek trail? Is there ever going to be a plan of making the entire creek a trail? As I understand from the bike plan, there is never a plan. It's not feasible. So this will never be a trail. This will just be two small segments of the bank creek drainage trench. Don't call that, it's very misleading when we call something that's not a trail a trail. And people imagine it's going to be green when it's just going to be too dirt path because we were not allowed to beautify it with landscaping. And thinking trail, I loved to take them to the Stevens Creek Canyon Creek, where it's so close to the water. But would we ever have enjoyed that in this trail? No, because it's, as you have seen the picture, it's very steep bank. In case I drop the water bottle or something into the trench, can I go and recover it? No, it's so deep, fourteen feet deep. I cannot even go and recover it. We go to a creek link-up with my son. Could we do a creek link-up here? No, fourteen feet deep, we cannot get down to the creek bed. So this is not like Stevens Creek Trail, which goes on for miles. And you'd want, and this is not like Los Gatos Creek Trail. This is not like St. Tomas Creek Trail. This is just two small segments in the middle of Cupertino. We need to be realistic on what we are talking about here. So I have made the presentation. Sorry, okay, so is this, okay. So I think, oh, how come? Okay, so outstanding, I think we need to be clear what issues are... Can we make this big full screen? So this is the first page, right? Okay, yeah, okay. So the staff...
Sorry, sorry, hold on. So just here, go to view, okay? Drop the menu down, whoever's controlling this. All right, and then go to full screen mode right here. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So this really should be a part of the staff report, which is not. The staff report did not include all the outstanding issues that hasn't been resolved after one whole year of staff time on this and consultant. So there are still easement and land swap issue that hasn't been resolved. As it turns out, the Link-Chenling fence along the Cupertino Civic Center was built on water district land and what the valley water wants the city to take off that fence because it was built on their land, their easement. And also, the Wilson Park baseball field, turns out, a part of the baseball field is, was built on valley water land, too. They want that back, too. So the city will have to do a land swap to resolve these issues. Those haven't been resolved. How we are going to swap, how much, where, not resolved. And relocation of the maintenance ramp. I think this is a better option that we will have only one single bridge. However, this is a new idea because the first alternative is not feasible anymore. And the location of the ramp, how big it is, is still not resolved. And that will require regulatory permits. And the bridge connecting to the Wilson Park, where exactly is it? What kind of bridge? Still not determined. And also, exactly how are we going to replace the bridge? Because the bridge, the only way to access the bridge will be from Wilson Park, which has a narrow footpath. So how are you going to have a truck over there to remove this pretty heavy bridge? It seems after an year, there is not a plan yet. And the trail design issue, as the water district pointed out, there are trailheads. They said, they still says, the sixty-five percent design did not provide them enough access for their vehicle. So that's an issue they point out. And then the water pollution control measures hasn't been resolved. And there needs to be, if we choose option, I think, C, D, or E, then this unpaved trail is a new thing, also hasn't been studied. So water district will propose some improvements because of some drainage issue. And then after one year, even with the paved design, there are still issues not resolved because water district wants, oh, the retaining curb issue. Water district doesn't want anything, even six inch of concrete on their land. So they would like the retaining curb to be installed on private residence under their fence. Yes, the staff is saying that they can get the water, resolve this with the water district, but that's going to take more staff time. And also the drainage issue, valley water wants the rain water to be drained away from the creek. And the staff, I think we know about this since last August. But still part of the design turns out it's difficult. So it still is draining to the creek, water district doesn't like that, still need to be resolved. Then the fencing issue, this is a residence issue. And after one year, it seems only now they, that there are the different, we haven't even talked about different options that we can resolve the fencing issue for DePaul Marlin. So the question is, we've spent so much staff time and money on this very short segment of dirt trail that's never going to be green? Isn't it not going to be a nice creek trail? Do we want to continue to spend more staff time and dollars on this? Okay, so let's compare the alternatives. Alternative one is presented by the feasibility study from August, last August, is invisible due to the baseball field issue. And now we have this newer alternative. We don't know where the ramp would be, we don't know what the bridge would be like, we don't know how we are going to swap. And it's not accessible at night and early morning, as the high schoolers point out. I think high schoolers do need access early morning and late at night. And imagine how dangerous it would be if a student have to ride an unfamiliar on-street route at night when they, during the day, they ride this off-street trail. And imagine how dangerous it would be when you are on your way to school. All of a sudden, the trail is closed, but you are late. Or you have to take a detour on-street and you are late. That's when accidents will happen. It will happen when the ramp was closed. And the residents showed that it's actually might have to be closed quite a few times during a year. That's when accidents will happen outside of the trail. And alternative four and five, I'll show you the map later. They are more, they are accessible by more residents because you can access this bike path from many point. But for these two dirt creek segments, you can only access them from trailhead. If you live right in the middle of the, if you live near Wilson Park, less likely you are going to use that because it's out of your way. If you live south of Lamar, less likely you are going to use that because you have to go out of your way to access the trailhead. And in terms of safety, ninety percent of Cupertino streets are neighborhood streets. So if we are saying neighborhood streets are so dangerous, we cannot let our children bike to school because of that? Who would ever bike to school unless you live right near a few house from the trailhead? Not many people then are going to use this trail to bike to school because most people will have to bike on neighborhood streets. That's not improved yet. So this is a letter from a Wilson Park resident who lived in Wilson Park. So she's wondering, she sees a lot of people are already riding on Wilson and already ride, but then the most dangerous area is Blenny, DeBarcelona, and Miller intersection. Does the city have any plan to improve those area? I think a lot of the resident, people who spoke today, who support trail also point out, these are dangerous areas. Stevens Creek's are dangerous areas. Are we doing anything? Does the city have any plan to improve them? No, not at this point. And so there are runners' stop signs. So they are, so right now, they are not going to be improved. So even if someone take Rignot Creek Trail to Cupertino High, they have to still face the same dangerous condition as today, which many people are saying they are not riding to school because of that and we are not doing anything about that. This is a safe route map for Cupertino High. Here is Cupertino High. These two blue segments are Rignot Creek Trail segments. So what's really dangerous is Finch. We should really have separated the bike paths there. Are we doing anything? No, no, it's not in the plan. We are not, at least not funded as far as I know. And this is DeBarcelona. Many people say it's dangerous now there. This is another pass that's not improved. So who would actually benefit from this trail you can access only from here? And maybe Wilson Park. Most of the Stevens Creek, no plan to improve it except this tiny section. From Wolf to Tenter, right? The rest of Stevens Creek, we don't have any funding to improve that. It's in a plan, this has been, initial design has been there for three years. No, no funding, no, no, no plan right now to actually do that. And here is Blenny. It's actually one of the higher priority project in the bike plan to install, separate, separate the, oh, no, sorry, this is the Anza. Oh yeah, this is Blenny, sorry, yeah, this is Blenny. So Blenny is one of the higher priority project that's in the bike path plan. Are we doing anything about that? No, that's not in our current plan yet. If we had that, that would help a lot, but we haven't done anything. So who would actually benefit from what we are doing here? Let's say, a group A is a group of people who are already biking to Cupertino High. These people, they are experienced biking and they are not likely to benefit from this off-street trail. And then there is a group B who think Lamar is already too dangerous to bike. If you think Lamar is too dangerous to bike here, then unless you live right here or you live right here, you are not going to benefit. And then they are not going to ride to Cupertino High because this is, this part is still dangerous. So who, who else might benefit? Those who imagine this route, these two blue segments will be safer because they imagine they will be safer. So they would risk their life to go to take this blue segment. More accidents will happen because inexperienced bikers are going to be tricked into thinking this is safer when they are not because we have so many other streets that's still not safe. So what are we doing? Are we putting more students in harm's way with false safety promise? Because we are not improving any of these more dangerous intersections. So the priority should be, we should improve the danger section first. These major sections should be improved first. And then we should improve neighborhood sections first because these are what people do right every day. And this is Eaton. So I also looked at who would actually benefit from Eaton, I'll skip that for now. And I also looked at, some people say they are going to, some people say they are going to ride from Vista High to Cupertino High. So I looked at the route. If you Google the route, the fastest route is this. Going through Sterling, which is another planned separated bike way we are not doing anything about. Going through Stevens Creek, we are not doing anything about it, okay? So bike commuter are most likely going to use that. And then this are, this other off-street kind of section, but it has a lot of twisted turns. We all know what, when accidents happen, when you turn. This, if we have separate bike paths, is going to be very safe because you don't go through a lot of turns. But if you go through a lot of turns, that's when accidents are likely to happen. Okay, so let's take a look at 2016 bike plan. Yes, the staff report says, okay, Rignot Creek Trail is consistent with the bike plan. The bike plan simply says, let's study it. And it's scored forty-eight out of a hundred. What other pace pass has higher priority? Blenny, separated bike pass has higher priority. And we have Civic Center to Sterling Bernhard. This, and we have Civic Center to Jollyman Park, Civic Center to Creekside Park. These are all Class Street Bike Boulevard. Yes, it's shared, but then we would be able to calm down the traffic so that it's a little safer. These are all planned library paths that leading to bike library. Are we funding any of them? No, not right now. And do we have any design, any plan? I think there is some plan to do the Civic Center to Sterling Bernhard. But the others are not that I know of. Okay, so these are the very nice separated bike network that we have planned. Are we doing anything? We are improving this part for McClellan Trail and we are improving a tiny bit from Wolf to Tenter. That's it. With Apple funding, we are doing something on the Mary and something on Bob Road. But what else are we doing? Are we doing anything for Sterling? No, are we doing anything for the Anza? No. This is a collision map from 2016 bike plan. And in fact, the 2016 bike plan made a list of suggestions on how to reduce these collisions. The city should take the following steps. Improve education for drivers and cyclists. Implement enhanced bikeway treatment. Add intersections. Yes, I would like to prioritize intersections because I think our intersections are very dangerous. I see intersections in other cities improved, but not us. Are we doing anything for any of these intersections? Any of these intersections? No, we are doing a little bit something right now for McClellan and Sterling and McClellan and Bob, that's it. Do we have any plan to design any of these other intersections? Not right now, not in our current bike plan. Of course, no funding either. But then there is not even people advocating for that. So we should improve, enhance existing bikeways on arterial networks. We are not doing that. Prioritize the creation of alternative cross-city routes that do not require travel on arterial network. This does not mean we want to build off-street trail. It means that we want to have alternative route on quieter streets. Are we planning on any of those? No. So ensure bicyclists have enough time to cross intersection by reviewing signal timing standards along key bikeways. Are we doing that? Not that I know of. So let's take a look at bike plan. I looked at the bike plan goals and objectives. I don't see any one of that objective says we want to emphasize off-street bike trail. Not any of the objective. I see the objective that we want to reduce the number and severity of pedestrian bicycle-related collision and injuries. We want to adopt net zero policy by 2017. This is 2019, we haven't started on that. Silicon Valley Bike Coalition, who say they endorse the Rignot Creek Trails project, is advocating for all the cities to adopt VJ zero policy, which is so that we have a goal to have zero bike collision. How do we have zero bike collision? By improving streets that actually, that collisions tend to happen. Are we doing that? No, Sunnyville just, I think, approved the VJ zero policy, but we don't have that yet. And then how are we going to measure this objective? Reduce the number of bicycle-related residents by fifty percent by 2026. And then reduce the number of bicyclists fatalities to zero by 2026. So that was the goal. But we are not doing that, unfortunately. Then let's take a look at funding. I think it's important to also look at really how much money we have to spend. If my son wants to buy, even wants to buy a Tesla, so like someone said, of course I would like a Tesla, but I have to look at how much money I have, right? How much do we have? Here is our city budget from the June eighteen city council meeting. As you can see that, yeah, we are expecting our revenue to go up, but then our expenditure will be going up faster. So the staff told us, we are looking at a structural deficit in a few years. Our expenditure would be rising faster than our revenue. And in case we need to provide more funding for affordable housing, for race for staff, we will be looking at more deficit. But then really, how much spare funding we have after we pay all the expenses? This is the table from the June eighteen city council meeting. We have about four point five million to six million dollars per year spare that we can spend. What does that will pay for? This has to, this funding has to pay for, if we want to fund more below market rate housing like the five million dollars the city paid for Veranda project to purchase the land, that has to come from here. If we want to take, purchase more parkland, if we want to improve Meti Park and improve Memorial Park, which has the pond is dead, right? And if we want to do something about Blackberry Golf Course, that has to come from this five million dollars per year. If we want to do anything more on bike path, it has to come from this five million dollars per year. If we want to improve seismic safety about the city hall and the service center that they all have seismic problem, this is estimated to be seventy million dollars. It has to come from this five million dollars per year plus storm drain, plus pay raises for our employee, which they do deserve because of the rising housing crisis. So basically, if we have an essential project that's really necessary, it's much more important than all the other projects, yes, we should fund it. However, if it's something that's nice to have, should we fund it? Because funding this means you are actually looking at using your future tax increase to fund this project. You are actually looking at city debt in the future to fund this project because with five million dollars per year, we already can cover all of this. So it's not like we have extra money to spend. Okay, many people talk about, oh, maybe we can. Many people talk about, oh, maybe we can get grant. Stevens Creek Trail got a really big grant. Well, these grants, I looked at, I looked up major B grants that we could, we likely could get, but these grants are competitive grants. If you have a really good bike trail project, maybe you can get it. But is Regnart Creek Trail project a good one? They count points. Is it close to school? Does it close a gap of a trail? Does that improve safety? There are many other things that they are looking at. So basically, what are our chances of getting this grant? But and besides this, we have the Union Pacific Railway Trail, we need grant four. And we have the Johnny Pearl, the I-280 trail. We will need grant four. Although Apple might fund it, Apple wants us to get grants too. So we can get the grant for all of our trail project. That's just a reality. And then, as mentioned, the Audubon Society Sierra Sierra Club, they, they have concerns about this project because it's conflict with. Basically, I think we say we are environmentalist. But creek, creek is like the last piece of nature in our, in the middle of our city. Do we have to have access to every last bit of nature in our city center? So that the habitat, the animals, they cannot escape from any human activity? How is that worth it? That's something we have to really think about. Does, yes, it will make our walking a tiny bit more comfortable on these two dirt segments. The biking might be a tiny bit safer on these two tiny segments. What surprise? This, this is some pictures I took just one day. I happened to park next to the open gate near the, near Regnart Creek Trail opening Rodriguez. There are so many trashes right outside of the chain link fence. If we open the trail, all this trash will be blown into the creek. And with such deep trench in that creek, all this trash will be trapped inside. Once they get in, they cannot be blown out. We cannot even try and clean it. Only the water district can do it with their truck. So are we really helping the environment? By taking, by having access to the very last bit of nature we have in our city? So some people say they care about quality of life and open space in the city center. Then why don't you join me to advocate for more open space and dedicated parkland in new development projects? Especially the larger ones with many acres of land. Who of you are advocating for more open space? For projects like vocal? Why don't you join me to advocate for better bicycle pedestrian infrastructure in new development project? I don't see anyone advocating for more open space, better bicycle project for vocal project. Because vocal project didn't provide very safe bike path in the project. So why don't you join us to advocate for projects, only projects that fit the general plan? So that we don't have oversized projects to worsen the housing congestion, worsen the traffic congestion? If you do care about safety for our children? How come so many of these trail supporters did not speak up? To advocate for bike safety where it can't? Regnart Creek Trail is not a trail, just a segment of. It's not green. It doesn't provide safer bike path except, except for those who live right next to the trailhead. And Valley Water? Are they cooperating? I'm not sure. Because it feels like they are making a lot of demands if they are really cooperating. They insist there should be no physical structure at all on their land. Not even half an inch of retaining curb, they have to complain about that. They have to complain about the city happened to build a fence on their easement. They have to complain about the land swap. So are they really cooperating? I feel like they are reluctant to partner in this. And something else I'd like to point out is, I think in order for the council to make good decision, we have to make sure that staff report is factual, not an opinion piece. When the staff report says, "The bike and pedestrian plan Regnart Creek Trail was identified as a vital connector of the neighborhood to local destination in the vicinity of the creek." I went to look at the plans. Now I couldn't find any reference about that. The staff report says the project was also recognized in the plans as a critical link for schoolchildren on their route to school. I went to look in the plans. I didn't see that. Instead, Regnart Creek Trail got one score, one out of twenty for safety. The reason is because it's already pretty safe, so it's not high score. And it's got ten out of twenty for school travel. Because it's really not that close to any school. And the staff report says, "Letter from Valley Water dated September 6th indicates that the project meets their standards." I, maybe the Valley Water said that elsewhere, but on this particular letter, they simply said, "City staff continues to engage with us to address our concerns in a mutually satisfactory manner." They didn't say it meets their standards, they are just happy to continue to work after a whole year. And then the staff report says, "Given that Valley Water's requirements have been met, they have no objection to the project and will enter into a joint agreement." Is that in the letter? What I found in the letter is, "Once design issues have been resolved, a joint use agreement with the city can be presented to our board." But as you can see earlier, there are so many designs issues still need to be resolved. And it doesn't mean their joint agreement will be approved by their board, it will just be presented. And staff report says, "Alternative one is consistent with bike path plan somehow. Alternative four and five are not." I looked in the plan again. I, I don't find that supported. So I'm sorry I'm being kind of tough on the staff here, but I think we have a new city council here. I think all of us on the council got elected because we are looking for transparency, for accountability, for community engagement. In order to do that, we should not rubber stamp a decision. We need to ask questions. And we need to make informed decisions that depend on the staff presenting available options and challenges so that the council can be properly informed. And we need the staff report to present us facts based on actual document, not opinions. So that the community can be properly informed and not be misinformed and when they are advocating for against the project. So I would like to ask my fellow council members, do we want to continue business as usual? Continue to waste staff time simply because many people want this particular two dirt segments for whatever reason? Or do we want to, from now on, demand transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility? And true community engagement from our council? And also fiscal responsibility, I mentioned to the staff, whenever we have a new capital project, we want to add funding in the middle of the year. I would like the staff to also present the chart that I showed you. How much money we actually have? How much are we projecting to, what's our projected expenditure and revenue? Whenever we add a new capital project, we have to look at how much money we have in our purse. We cannot, you cannot just bring something to the council and say, here, fund $5 million and not tell us, do we have that $5 million? What would be the impact if I fund that $5 million on our, our long-term financial stability? So what I would like to actually see is to really look at net zero, which was what the bike plan required, to improve intersections where collisions actually happen. And then do fast implementation of separated bike ways, as I've seen in San Jose, for arterial streets. And I would like to see as the Audubon Society proposed and some residents presented, green street, that we have walkable and bikeable streets for all neighborhoods streets. Not just those people who happen to live next to a trail. Most, ninety-nine percent of Cupertino will be neighborhood streets. How can we make our neighborhood street green, safer, and enjoyable to walk and bike? That should be our goal. Not focusing on just tiny bit of two segments that's in the middle of the city. We want bike paths. And also I would like to focus on bike paths, safe bike paths within one or two blocks of our schools. I see that in other cities. But our schools, except Montavista is getting a good bike path now. But around Hyde, around Cupertino High, around Lawson, around Kennedy, do we have safe bike paths? If we don't, we need to advocate that. We need to really get, I need you guys to come here, tell council, this is what we want. We want to improve bike paths near schools. Safety of our children is important. Not asking us to spend millions on two dirt segments of a trail. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilman Paul wanted to go last, so I will go now. So about fifteen years ago, one of my perpendicular neighbors on Farallon Drive asked me to sign a petition against opening the Regnart Creek Trail. So I told her, I'll sign it because you're my neighbor and I want to support you. But I really want to tell you that I would like to see that trail. So I never thought I'd be up here today, a decade later, considering the exact same issue. But now I have to consider not just what my neighbors want and don't want, and what the residents whose homes are immediately adjacent to the trail want, but what's best for the entire city. This is about what's best for Cupertino. And as several people have said, it's about basing decisions on facts, not emotion, but real facts. Petitions, we don't make decisions based on the number of signatures on petitions. But it is nice, if there are petitions, that they present the facts accurately when they're trying to get people to sign them. You can always design questions in a poll or a petition to elicit a certain response, but that's not really the honest thing to do. So about waterway trails. Throughout the Bay Area, there's trails on many of the waterways. I've used the Santa Masaquino Trail to commute over to Freedom Circle and Mission College Boulevard. Even when it was a dirt trail, going under 101 before it was paved, it was still heavily used. It's more heavily used now. I used Los Gatos Creek Trail. Every morning when I lived in Campbell, I commuted on the Stevens Creek Trail to Mountain View. And like a speaker tonight, when I had to use Caltrain, even though Sunnyvale Caltrain is closer to Cupertino, I would often take Stevens Creek Trail over to the Mountain View Caltrain station because it was a much nicer and safer route, even though it probably added another twenty minutes or so to the ride. The key thing to look at is to look at the facts. You know, we've heard a lot over the past several months, a lot of strange issues, a lot of narrative that's not quite accurate. We've heard, no one will use the trail, so it's a waste of money. And then we've heard the noise from so many people using the trail will be a problem. So I'm not sure which one that is. We've heard that the traffic, that the crossing at Blaney will create traffic congestion for vehicles because it'll be another place that vehicles will have to stop. And I'm not sure that's a bad thing. I'm not sure that we're here to make sure the vehicles can get down Blaney as quickly as possible. And maybe we should consider doing something to make cycling safer. And my favorite, we keep hearing Regnart Creek referred to by some as an ugly ditch and some as a beautiful riparian corridor. And I'm not sure, you know, which it is. I've heard, you know, I keep hearing the word ditch, but some people keep saying creek. And with all due respect to the Vice Mayor, I have worked on creek cleanup on Regnart Creek when my son was in the Cub Scouts. I don't want to tell you how long ago, but we did have creek cleanup on Regnart Creek. And there's a lot of trash in that creek. There's shopping carts. We cleaned up a lot. And this is just people, kids that are in maybe third and fourth grade.
On this section, because it's very steep.
Okay, so please, yeah, please don't interrupt. So I mean, I think we know what the real reason for the opposition to this is. And it's real. It's the concern about loss of privacy. And that is the root of the opposition. And it's a valid concern. There will be people walking and bicycling along the trail. They will be talking, you'll be able to, if your house is backing up to Lamar, the houses on Lamar, you would be able to hear them talking in your backyard, maybe even in your house if the windows are open. And, but for years, they backed up to this land. And I know, I've heard that they don't use it. But every time I go down that trail on a walk, there's people back there. So I don't know who are the people that aren't using it and are using it. The last walk I went on was maybe two weeks ago. Had a nice conversation with one of the residents that was out there on the trail. So I'm sure not everyone uses it, but it's not accurate to say that it's never, people are never out there using it. To me, the big issue here, the one that's like impossible to mitigate is Lozano and De Palma. And, you know, I'm honestly not sure what could be done there. You know, in retrospect, perhaps those houses should not have been built like that, knowing that the creek was there. But then again, it was known that there was an easement and it could be a trail eventually. And in fact, a lot of that's already there now. It's just it's not used because it doesn't, it's not connected to anything. So, I mean, do we use this water district land to avoid? Do we not use it? To avoid the privacy issues and deny the Cupertino residents the use of the land? Or do we find ways to mitigate the privacy concerns? And as I think it was Vice, former Mayor Lowenthal, I think, said, you know, we all have to give a little bit here. So I think we can mitigate most of the concerns. Maybe a concrete wall is expensive. It's more of a sound barrier than a fence. It's a little uglier. But it does last longer. It just costs a lot more money. But the key, we're not taking anyone's land for this trail. This is water district land that they would let us use for the public benefit. This is Water District land that they would let us use for the public benefit. And trail was open before, maybe it'll be open again, maybe it won't, we don't know what's gonna happen here tonight. So moving on to cycling safety, we've heard numerous times about how safe Lamar is for cyclists. And in fact, I ride on Lamar often. And westbound, it's not too bad, there are no intersecting streets on the north side of Lamar, but there's a lot of driveways with cars backing out, and a lot of parked cars. And I remember my former colleague, who I work with in Cupertino, who lives in Campbell now, and one day, he backed out of his driveway, and a car in the adjacent driveway blocked his view, and he hit a pedestrian walking, walking by on the sidewalk, and unfortunately, the pedestrian was killed. And that, I mean, that really changed his life. He gave up, he won't drive anymore. He gave up driving. And it's the driveways and the intersecting streets that are the real danger to cyclists. It's also parked cars, but it's people backing out of driveways, and you always hear, I just didn't see you, I just didn't see you, even with the backup cameras on the newer cars. And then, if I'm going westbound on Lamar, and I get to Blaney, then, if you've seen the video game Frogger, that's what it's like to get across Blaney. It's like playing Frogger, because you have to go between the cars going northbound and southbound. Often, I'll just turn right and go northbound for a while, and wait till there's an opening southbound, and then make a U-turn and head back southbound to my street. Sometimes, there's garbage cans in the bike path, because it's Thursday, and people put their garbage cans out in the bike path, there's no place else to put them. Then you gotta veer out into the street, and I'm careful, I have a mirror, and I look, but the kids always look back before they veer out into the street when the bike lane is blocked. Now, my wife rides to work a lot, she won't even try the Frogger on Blaney. She goes up to Sassoon and crosses onto John, where there's a stop sign, and then goes on East Estates over to the entrance to the bike path over to Creekside Park. So, and I take issue with the narrative that because the map shows no biker pedestrian accidents on Lamar, that it means Lamar is safe. Because the reality is that the number of cyclists willing to ride to school or ride to the library is less because of the lack of cycling infrastructure. The experienced cyclists have no problem with riding on Lamar, and the inexperienced won't ride on Lamar, even if there was the option, option four or five, which puts infrastructure there, because there's really no way to fix Lamar to make it safer cycling. You could put in protected bike lanes and take away all the on-street parking, but that wouldn't fix the problem of the driveways and the intersecting streets. So we're not just moving on-road cyclists to the trail. What we want to do is enable a new group of riders that are unwilling to ride on the street. And none of us know how many of those there are. We know there's some, we know there's parents that say you can absolutely not ride on the street, we'll only let you ride if there's an off-street path. And we really don't know how many there are. There could be 10, there could be, you know, 300. You know, there's just no way to know. And one more correction, for Cupertino High School, when you get, when you're going east on Cala de Barcelona, and turn left on Finch with the new bulbouts there, immediately after you turn left on Finch, there's a big sign that says "Bikes." And the bikes turn right into the Cupertino High School property and go around the back of the property. They don't have to continue down Finch and park behind the bandroom or somewhere else. So while it would be nice to have a bike lane protected or otherwise on Finch, it's not really necessary to get to Cupertino High School. Where it would be great is if you're trying to ride to Main Street, because that would be a great way to go there, but perhaps that's for another time. And then Eaton. So my kids went to Eaton. I used to walk them, we lived two blocks away. There was one guy who lived about 200 feet away and drove his kids every day, and I would walk past him, getting, pulling out of his driveway, and I would always be walking back before he got back. And I never could understand the reason that he would drive his kids just a couple of hundred feet. But then again, the way that parents drove around the school, I could kind of understand it. There was a crossing that was quite difficult. But in terms of Regnar Creek Trail, some people said, well, they're gonna get to Pacifica, then there's no way to cross Pacifica to get to the other side. Well, they'll do the way they always do now. They go down to Farallon, and they cross at Farallon. So that really wasn't a valid excuse as to why that would not be a good route to Eaton. And I have seen, thank God nothing happened, but I was riding my bike once, right at school starting, and a kid at Eaton gets hit by a van. The kid, he's under the, fortunately, he was a small kid on a small bike, and the van had high clearance, and he, I don't think he was badly injured, but I mean, for a while, I thought he was dead. And it's really, would really be nice to get the kids off of streets like Blaney when they're going to school. Now, as to cost, this is a lot of misinformation out there on cost. So it's true, we have a limited amount of money every year for various projects, but as other people pointed out, there are grants available, and the grants are scored. And wow, Regnar Creek Trail scores really high when it comes to qualifying for grants. It serves schools, it closes the gap, and it improves safety. I think those were the top three criteria to qualify for a grant. And another issue, I've been involved with the library expansion. So if the library expansion goes through, and we build the program room, we are also required to either provide more parking, or to somehow mitigate the number of cars that drive to the library. The plan has been to pave part of Library Field over by the fence along the Regnar Creek Road there, the pathway for, and have an entrance on Pacifica, and an entrance from the existing parking lot, and have sufficient parking so we don't worsen the parking situation at the library. We may even be required to not only increase the parking for the program room, but to also address the underparking that already exists. And I don't know how many people would like to start paving over Library Field and to have that as a parking lot. But if we can find ways to reduce the number of cars by providing better ways to get to the library, including biking and walking, that would reduce the number of extra spaces we would have to provide. And we might get away with not putting any parking on Library Field. And Roger can talk to this, I'm not, I don't remember, how much of the budget for the program room were we allocating for parking along Library Field?
It was 1.5 million.
Right, 1.5 million. So I would love to find ways, and it's not just Regnar Creek Trail, it's the connectivity along Pacifica and McClellan, it's putting in bike lockers, so people feel safe about leaving their bikes parked at the library. But we really have to look at the big picture here when it comes to cost. We have to look at grants, we have to look at other money we save. So even if we went with option A, the most expensive one, it's not like we're actually going to spend all that money on the trail. And we don't have to go with option A. I prefer option A or B, I could live with option D. I am concerned that we should have railing along the steepest parts of the trail, but remember, this railing is like, isn't it split rail, kind of like split rail? I mean, someone could still crawl through there and get into the creek. And, you know, that's, that's the way of life. We don't, we're not putting fences along our streets and sidewalks, so someone doesn't dart out into traffic from a sidewalk. We just assume they will use common sense. Like one lady said, you know, you just don't ride your bike down into the creek or the river, it's just not something that you really want to do. And yes, parents do need to keep control of their children. You know, I have kids, you know, occasionally, they try to, when they were small, they would try to get away, you know, put themselves in danger, and you have to constantly be on guard. If you're riding the subway in San Francisco, there's no, none of the gates like you see in other countries that prevent someone from just falling onto the track. You have to, you have to be careful, you have to keep your children under your control. What else? The Sierra Club, okay, I've been in the Sierra Club for 39 years. I have a pretty intimate knowledge of how Loma created Chapter and the National Sierra Club work. There's a lot of subgroups in the Sierra Club, and they tend to oppose all trails, because they feel that trails are an intrusion into wild areas. But as others have said, Regnar Creek is not really a wilderness area, it's a concrete-lined creek. And some people here have called it a ditch, and I don't like that narrative, but they want to call it a ditch, that's fine. Opening it, yeah, it may scare off some of the coyotes that will have to find new habitat, but there's not rare or endangered species there, to my knowledge. And, you know, there'd probably be a net gain to the environment from adding more opportunities to avoid driving and reducing the carbon footprint. Somebody mentioned trail closures. It is true, Santa Masaquino Trail closes occasionally due to flooding and heavy rains. There's an underpass on 101 in Palo Alto that, they actually close it for several months of the year, even when it's not flooded, just, it's just, they will close it because there's a potential for flooding, they want to be extra careful. The trail's closed for maintenance. The trail that goes by 49ers Levi Stadium, they close it during 49ers games. You can't ride your bike past it for security reasons. So just because the trail isn't open 24/7, doesn't mean that it's not something that's So, let's see if I have anything else here. Oh, so I, you know, the on-street options, four and five, you know, they're not going to increase cycling, so there's no point in either of those. You just may as well not do anything, rather than even try to spend money on that, because it won't increase the number of cyclists at all. So I would favor option D. I prefer option A or B, but the, you know, they are quite expensive, and I'm not sure. I don't know, if you go for, Roger, if you go for a more expensive option, do you have a better chance of getting more grant money if it's a nicer paved trail? Or is it just about any trail would qualify for the same amount of money?
I think it depends on the grant, as was shown in the competitive for Measure B. If it is ADA accessible, it may get a few more points, but, you know, there's other factors that get prioritized into it.
I thought they only funded Class 1, the Major B funding.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
And also, this doesn't close any gap. What gap does it close?
Okay, so, yeah, you've already spoken.
I mean, there is no gap it's closing, so it doesn't get that 20 points.
Well, I would disagree with that.
The looped trail hasn't been built.
So, and, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails, not nice, not, many of them not so nice, and all sorts of threats regarding future elections and whatever. You know, I'm trying to do what's right for the residents, and if I lose an election, if I even run again because of my vote on this issue, then so be it. You know, it's just more important to do the right thing for the city. And I would say, the opponents of the trail are not my enemies. They're my neighbors, they're people, my, the parents of kids that my kids went to school with and played softball with, and it just doesn't need to be this divisive. We can create a project if everyone gives a little and do what's right for the community. Thank you. Okay, Darson.
Okay, I apologize in advance if this meanders and I lose people, but I'm gonna try to get to a unanimous vote here. And it'll, it'll be, be a bit of a work, because this is all done tonight. And part of that is gonna involve projecting something. I'm gonna be moving back and forth, because we don't have the technical AV capability of giving us files, so that we can manipulate it. So if I can put my iPad on that projector...
You can't project directly from the iPad?
No.
You cannot project.
Hmm. I'm not good. All right, Mr. Sir. Okay, so I'm gonna divide this into questions and comments, because I haven't asked any questions. And so I'll go ahead and start with the questions, I have about a dozen of them. So, so this is the creek alignment. You'll see on the lower left-hand corner, this is Library Field right here, and this is City Hall. And I think, you know, this points up north towards the top of the screen. So my first question, and they're not in any particular order, but I tried to, you know, kind of group them in kind of a sequential fashion to get to the main points. For Los Andes, as well as Farallon Drive, what happens with those residents is that they're not necessarily right along the alignment. However, they are impacted by the fact that people along the alignment on the other side of the creek can potentially see into their yards and their homes and their windows. So my first question is, has there been any outreach to those residents regarding fencing or landscaping that could be done in conjunction with the city? And I see nods, which is good, but please elaborate on what that has been, and we'll take it from there.
Yes, we extended the invitation, staff extended the invitation, to meet with all of the residents that line the creek, regardless of which side of the creek they are on, and that included the Farallon Drive, Los Andes Way residences, as well as the people that lived along Lamar Drive. I don't recall offhand the exact number of those folks that we'd met with, but we did extend the invitation to all of them, and met with quite a few of them.
And have you had any, oh, sorry. Have you had any substantive discussions about what it is that the residents would like? Is it a matter of landscaping? Is there fencing preferred? What has been the tenor of those discussions, if they've even occurred?
It's a mixed bag, and that goes for the Farallon and Los Andes residences, as well as the Lamar residences. So there were, you know, there are a substantial number that expressed interest in having, you know, a new fence or a higher fence. There were some that didn't want us to make any changes, because they liked having the light from the sun shine into their garden, or they liked the view over to Wilson Park. It was, it was very much a mixed bag, almost independent of which street that we were speaking.
Okay, well, take heart, my motion does encapsulate this potential. All right, on to question number two. So I'm gonna go ahead and just mark off what I've covered here. So this is Los Andes, this is Farallon, not on the side of the creek as the alignment. We've heard a lot about Lozano Lane and De Palma Lane, and I'll go ahead and just mark it right here. I believe that's these four houses on the side of the alignment. And what I'll do is I'll clear this and go over to another image on the iPad.
I can't zoom in. I think this is pretty, iPad's only as big as it is, right?
Okay, so, all right, so this is actually reoriented, and north is to the bottom of your screen. So Lozano Lane, those two houses are these. My question here... My question here is with regard to... Okay, great. So my question here is with regard to these two homes, has there been outreach done to the residents in terms of what kind of landscaping or, or fencing they'd like to see? Kind of the same question as with the Los Andes and the, the Farallon residents.
Yes, we, we have outreach to those, to those residents.
And what's the status of those conversations?
They're, they're ongoing. You know, we, we haven't, we haven't come to a consensus between the residences and staff in terms of what, what treatments are desired. There was some desire for, you know, some permanent trees, that kind of thing. And as, as Roger explained earlier, the Water District is, is very particular about what they will allow and not allow on their property. We, you know, we've offered raising the, kind of the iron fence in front of their house, doing some kind of a landscaping screening on that, maybe some removable planters that are provided in front of their homes, which the sixty-five percent drawings show. It's still an ongoing discussion at this point, but we're, we're willing to and have been working with those, those property owners to come up with solutions that mitigate to the best extent we can the, the privacy and, and security concerns.
Now, have the discussions gone to the property owner's property as opposed to the Water District property having some modifications done to it? Such as fencing or landscaping on the property owner's property?
We, we haven't discussed doing anything to the, to the private property itself, no.
Okay, and so they wouldn't be limited by Water District restrictions, is that correct? I'm asking because I don't know, but, you know, is there anything that... So, so Water District land has certain restrictions imposed by the Water District. The private property owners could potentially, if they had, you know, some kind of source of funding, take that funding and do something with their own private property, is that, is that correct?
Sure, yeah, they, I mean, within the, the limits of, of, you know, planning ordinances and whatnot, they can do what, what they would like to their property if the funding were available, certainly.
Okay.
Maybe I can just interrupt?
Sure.
So Sunday I actually met with Gary, who's in the front row, who I believe has the authority of the HOA to represent the HOA. This is the most recent document that they sent with some type of a wall barrier. So I walked it with him.
Great, great.
If, if maybe Gary were to just...
Well, let me, why don't we do this? Well, let's, let's, maybe just for the sake of the fact that you're bringing it up, I'll, I'll put this up temporarily.
I just don't want to be overdoing what might or might not be considered.
Okay, so, so, so thank you for my point. I, I didn't know that, actually. So, so that's very interesting. So as long as it's within, say, planning requirements, some kind of barrier could potentially be placed up on a private property owner's property. And, and so I, I think that point is, is pretty well made.
But I think Gary was requesting to put this on the Water District property. They would like to get one foot easement back from the Water District because they did it ten feet to Water District earlier.
Well, I, I will give you a caveat that the motion that I'll bring forward is something that is within our power to grant. So, you know, we don't control the Water District. And I, I'm not going to make a, you know, a motion contingent upon them granting anything, including a one-foot easement. But I, I think we're going in the right direction. So let me, let me remove this image. Okay, something more time to absorb, I guess. So, so that covers Lozano from my questions. Now, when you go off, off to the left on this image, actually, let me, let me just draw a line here where the, where the trail is. This is where the trail is in front of the Lozano properties. Cars don't actually have access to this outside of Water District vehicles. And, and people don't park along that path. But if you look at De Palma on the Google Maps image, there's actually a car right here. There are a couple of cars right here. And let me get to the point of, of what I'm going to ask by going to another image, hold on. So this comes from the sixty-five percent plan. And it's, it's roughly the same part of the alignment. These are the De Palma houses. And you can kind of see, there are still two cars here. The dotted line over on the left is the Lozano alignment in front of those houses. And where it gets kind of solid with little dots inside of it is in front of De Palma. And so my question has to do with, with the easements because it kind of looks like, it kind of looks like this area is where cars go currently and cars are parked there. If, if that's the case and they're rightfully there, what's the status of the easements? And how are we going to, you know, obtain trail space on that part of the road?
Well, our, our recommendation that's shown here is to provide some raised pavement markers that would align roughly with where you're showing that kind of solid cross-hatched area to keep the bikes and peds that are using the trail separate from the cars that would, you know, park there or access the, the driveways and garages for those, for those four residences. The, the tricky thing here is that we need to maintain twenty feet clear access for emergency vehicles to access those, those four homes. And so putting raised pavement markers along that kind of hatched area would, that actually gives you less than twenty feet to that northern curb line. But because they're just raised pavement markers, emergency vehicles would be able to, to drive over them if needed so that they would have the twenty feet necessary clearance to access those, those homes.
Well, I, I think this is probably just a question that could warrant a little bit more research, but let's say I'm a property owner there or the property owner from some of the comments made earlier tonight are one of the four from the same family. If, if I've been using that space for a number of years to park my cars and suddenly it's been kind of preempted as, as potential trail space, do we run into any legal issues that we need to resolve prior to proceeding? Because apparently from the image, there, there's a vehicle there right over where that alignment is, is drawn. That, that's just the, the basic question I had because on the left-hand side, you do already have that trail. You, you have the, yeah, you have a walking pedestrian trail. But on the right-hand side is just road. So, so that was my question as, as relates to that. Do you have an answer for that now or should we wait on that a bit?
There is an existing, you know, Santa Clara Valley, or the Valley Water does own that land that the trail would reside on. So we would not be restricting anybody from parking on their own private property by, by doing this solution.
Right, I, I guess my question has to do with kind of historical expectations and maybe we can kind of follow up on that. Oh, and the season's out, the city attorney might have...
Yeah, I mean, I could see some theory that there might be.
Might be, right, okay, great. Well, let me go on to the next one. Okay, so, so this just goes off to the, off to the east on the alignment. This area here is where the trail would be. And then the next picture... This actually, let me go back. All right. I, I get the sense communicating with some of the Lozano and De Palma residents that, that although not, not particularly palatable, it's something that could potentially be resolved. Out of all my communications with the residents along this alignment, I'm most concerned with this residence. And here's the reason why. It's because when you go here, we're saying that we're going to move up here and then go across to this side of the creek, the south side of the creek. If you can see this area of the resident's house, I believe that's part of the driveway. And so the, the question that's been raised is, look, when I'm backing up here, what's going to prevent me from backing up into pedestrians and bicyclists? And I haven't really heard a satisfactory answer as to what we can do in terms of configuration to give this particular resident comfort. And so if, again, this is one of those things you think about and get back to us later, fine. But if you have a, a better answer than, you know, we've heard previously, although I don't know if it's been articulated, you know, quite, quite visually like this, I, I'd love to hear what that is because it really does seem like this particular resident has a legitimate issue with regard to safety and with regard to the fact that there really is no... And, and, and when they're slowing down this way, they're going to have to come to an almost stop right where this thing, well, right where, right past where people are crossing the street. So, so that's my question. What kind of comfort can we give this resident?
I, I was out there and, and met with this resident and, you know, surveyed the, the situation. And when I was out there, I didn't see any condition that I felt was unusual in terms of a particular hazard to bicyclists or pedestrians that would be using the crosswalk relating to the vehicle backing out of the driveway. There's, I forget exactly how much, maybe twenty, thirty feet or so between the driveway and where the crosswalk is going to be located. And I didn't, I didn't see that as being, as being, you know, noteworthy or unusual condition. We can, we will reevaluate that as part of the design process as we proceed from sixty-five percent to a hundred and ensure that, in fact, that's the case. But that was based on my, my field review at the time.
And I think part of the theme of my comments is going to be more quantitative than qualitative. It's to encourage, you know, if we make those types of statements, let's talk about lines of sight. Let's talk about distances, let's talk about angles, let's talk about stopping distances as opposed to kind of the subjective, you know, I, I don't see a problem here. So I, I mean, the residence sees a problem. And I think that just looking at this visually, I, you know, personally, I can, I can see what the issue might be. But if, if there's, if there's something a little bit more numerically oriented that you could provide that could give that kind of comfort in addition perhaps to, you know, actual configurations of crosswalks and, you know, such, then, you know, I, I think that would make for a more, more, more satisfying conclusion there. Okay, so my next question has to do with the Lamar part of it. So that'll be the next part of the alignment. Let me move to the next picture. Okay, I think for now we can just go back to the regular camera shot. We don't need the overhead. So with regard to Lamar, Lamar is the next stretch. And it is the alignment along the creek that's between Blaney and then East Estates to, to the east. One of the residents I met with asked about if, if the, if the city is putting up fencing or a wall, the plan is to place it on the resident's property, is that correct? The fencing and the wall?
That's correct.
Okay. And so we need to know with precision where the resident's property starts and where Water District property stops. Have we conducted that survey?
Yeah, we, we have a survey of that.
You, you do have a curb survey? You know where... I'm sorry, if you want to talk, you'll need to go up to the dais.
Yeah, the residents, including myself, actually requested for the survey with the property lines multiple times. And we did get the, some survey result, but that didn't include the property lines. So the, currently the topological survey the city has doesn't include the property lines. So we don't know where our property lines are supposed to be and also where our fence lines stands on that survey. So it's kind of unknown charted area.
Right, okay, well, thank you, thank you very much. And so that's the question I'm asking. We can let that be open as well. How will we determine the property line for the wall if we haven't already? So let's just get that clarified when you go back to your references. I'm sorry, so let me just repeat your question, Jennifer. Your, your question is shouldn't the property line be on everyone's deed? However, I think that might be distinct from a survey determining precisely where on the property we're talking about placing a physical fence, you know, right at that point in time. Is that, is that correct? I mean, I'm not a surveyor, obviously, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, you'd want to confirm what you, the, the dimensions you would find on your deed through the survey.
Through the survey, okay. So, all right, well, let me, let me go on to the next part of this question. I had a question about that retaining curb because at one point, the residents, some of the residents were telling me, well, they're going to put a retaining curb and then people can stand on the retaining curb and look over into my fence. Is, is, okay, is my understanding correct where the previous discussion tonight was that there's going to be a retaining curb, but the fence or the wall will be on top of it? No, so you're shaking your head. So, so what's the status of that?
Right, so with option A and B, the, the retaining curb would essentially be at the same elevation that the trail is now.
Okay.
Right up against the, the private fence.
Okay.
Right, so it, and then there would be, the grade of the, of the asphalt in A and B may be lower than the curb on the creek side. But the curb itself won't be any higher than, than the trail is now.
Got it. So when residents say, we have a concern that people will stand on the retaining curb and they just have that much better of a vantage point potentially over my fence, that's actually a legitimate point?
Well, it'd be no different than what they have now.
Okay, so the retaining curb is there right now and...
Well, no, the elevation is there now. And a retaining curb, if we go with A or B, won't change that elevation.
Okay, and what about C, D, or E? What happens with regard to that?
Well, yeah, because that's going to be decomposed granite. The retaining curb would not be needed.
Understood, okay. So my next question is, do you know how many homes adjoin the trail? And I know it depends on how you count.
I know there's a total of eighty, eighty-four.
Okay, I, I actually, you know, I was trying to count on the map and I got sixty-three plus fifteen potentially if you're adding, you know, both sides of the creek, but I'll, I'll go with eighty-four. How many homes adjoin the potential wall or fence that's going along the Lamar section of the potential trail?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
I counted twenty-five from the map, but, you know, you can confirm my figure. Okay, so I, I think someone else alluded to this. But I, I'd just like to ask the question, where are we going to store the bridge? I had bridges, but apparently we're just looking at one bridge at this point. Where, where are we planning to, on storing the bridge when it's not...
Well, it, it would be, it wouldn't be taken off-site. It would just, it would just be swung over to a location in the, in the park that wouldn't be too obstructive until they did their work.
And how long would the maintenance take, would you estimate?
It could be, it could be a couple of weeks when they, when they do that.
Okay, so the, the trail would shut down essentially from, at least along the Lamar alignment between East Estates and, and Blaney, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it, it would depend on which segment of the trail that they may be working in. But yeah, wherever they're doing their work, the trail would likely be closed.
This is a T, right? So it's just the T to Wilson Park would be shut down for that time. The, the through trail would continue.
The trail wouldn't close because the bridge would just provide access to the park.
Well, I was just thinking if they're actively working in the creek bed and their trucks are up on, on the trail during, during that time, that segment would likely be closed.
If the trucks are on the trail, yes.
Okay, okay. So you're saying that you could remove the bridge and if no, no trucks are, or there's no physical hindrance on the trail itself, you could potentially still get through? But there's probably someone working on the, the bridge if it's removed.
If we've removed it, they're, they're in there clearing out the, the creek.
Something, they're working on, okay. All right, let's see.
Could I ask, so in case the bridge is removed, where you are going to put the bridge?
Well, it would, it would remain on, on the park site, you know... You know, we're not going to take it very far away from, we're not going to take it far away from its location.
So it would be part, it will occupy part of the grass area of the park?
Temporarily, yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a fair question to ask for precision, right? I mean, I think it's, without belaboring the point, it's clear that we don't know precisely where we're going to put it. So, you know, one of those, like, kind of, let's follow up and figure out, you know? Just so, you know, is it going to affect the baseball diamonds? You know, that kind of thing. My next question is, do the current estimates for the options include design and environmental costs? So if option A costs $5 million, does that fold in the $800-something thousand dollars you guys are now asking for for the overall design and environmental budget? Or is that just building it?
Yeah, that's just building it.
Is building, okay, so that's on top of, okay.
Yes.
All righty. Councilmember Willie mentioned lighted crosswalks. Are lighted crosswalks on Blaney and East Estates part of the budget?
They are not.
They're not, okay. And so I'm assuming that the same holds true for Pacifica and Rodriguez. Yeah, I'll let you guys catch up with each other. Okay, so now I'm kind of thinking about...
We were just talking about, you know, when you said lighted crosswalks, I'm thinking something like what we have on Stelling near Quillan.
That's exactly what I'm thinking of, yes.
Yeah, that's not a design feature of this project. We have the rapid rectangular flashing beacon.
Okay.
That's at the different crossings, but not an in-pavement lighted crosswalk.
Well, let's just say I trust you to determine what would be optimal and transfer that question over to the crossings at Rodriguez on the north side of the north-south part of the alignment, as well as across Pacifica, potentially, on the south side of the north-south side of the alignment, where you're basically starting near the city hall area and you're going due south until you get to the east side of Library Field and Pacifica. So the concern is that if the claim is that kids are going to be using this trail in order to get to school, in order to get to the northern part, they're probably going to be crossing Rodriguez as soon as they get off that trail, you know, from the, from the homes that are there near De Palma as well as Lozano. And then the other concern is, you know, when they head south, and let's say they're going to Eaton Elementary, they'll probably cross, they'll probably cross around that Library Field area. I mean, are there plans to put crosswalks there as well? Or, you know, at a couple of other points that people have mentioned, but I just didn't...
Not currently.
Not currently? Okay, so that's not budgeted either, is that?
That's correct, that's correct for those two locations.
Do we have any contingencies for our budget at this point?
There is contingency within the budget, yes.
Okay, yeah, $5 million seems like an awfully round number, so, you know. I'm sure there's probably some wiggle room in there. What are our grant-writing capabilities on staff at this point? Is our staff that applied for the Stevens Creek Trail grants still on staff and available to apply for grants for this project?
Yes, they are. I mean, she's been really immersed in the Park Master Plan, but yes, she's still on staff.
Okay, so Gail helped write it, she's still available, could still, okay. To your knowledge, are there grants available to help support paying for this project? I think this has been asked. The sense that I got from the answer was that we don't know a dollar amount, but we have a pretty strong sense that there are grants available for, you know, this type of project, including from the Water District?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I will go back to the overhead now. And I just want you to know that I'm not...
Can I add a question while you do that?
Sure, sure.
So, the crossing of the East Estate, are we doing anything to slow the bike down? Because we have heard that they tend to just rush through. Are we doing anything to slow them?
Yeah, we will be designing a feature into where the trail exits onto East Estates that will involve some kind of a barrier, chicane, so that the bikes have to slow down and go around it in order to get out. Similar to what we have on the Stevens Creek Trail where it meets Stevens Creek Boulevard.
So you say we will, so it's not in the 65% design right now?
That's a very detailed design element that has not been included yet in the 65%, but will be as we move forward to 100%.
Okay, so this is in the staff report on page 14. Commissioner Moore of the Planning Commission is the chair of the Environmental Review Committee. I'm the council representative. I happen to see this as well. And let me just go through my concern here. The paragraph that talks about the environmental review portion of this states, "An initial study/mitigated negative declaration conforming to the requirements of SEQA will be completed." Okay, so here's the issue. And I just, I want to just describe it in a straightforward manner and not, again, belabor the point and beat the dead horse and all that. But the fact of the matter is, this is not procedurally accurate. We have an environmental review committee that's supposed to go over these things, you know? And I know that a lot of people view SEQA and councils for that matter as a roadblock in their, you know, kind of work, you know? Which, you know, from a certain perspective, might be legitimate. But the fact of the matter is, we're empowered by statute to review projects for environmental compliance. And so let me go ahead and put that statute up. All right, this has many words, but one of the most important operative words is "shall." All right, "All discretionary projects which are not categorically exempt or otherwise exempted from further environmental assessment shall be forwarded to the Environmental Review Committee for evaluation under SEQA." Okay, so this project has, I sit on the ERC, it has not hit the ERC. Point number one. Subpoint B of the statute, "The committee shall evaluate the initial study." So there's an initial study of projects. There are always initial studies of projects. And the point of those initial studies is essentially to determine, do you need an EIR? Do you need an environmental impact review? You're kind of like the whole bells and whistles of environmental impact. Or is the impact significantly not significant enough, if you will, to warrant a mitigated negative declaration? Okay, and so going on, "Shall evaluate the initial study of a proposed project to determine whether the project may or may not have a significant effect on the environment." In other words, the Environmental Review Committee makes a determination as to whether this goes through an EIR or goes through a mitigated negative declaration. So here is my question. And I'm not trying to play gotcha. You know, I want things to move forward. But my question is this, it's very simple. Can we be more careful about process in the future?
Absolutely.
Okay. And this is a question for our city attorney. Does the way our process has gone thus far for this affect our ability to make a decision tonight?
No, we haven't begun environmental review, is that right? Or has there been an initial study?
There's been some review has started, but we're by no means finished with it.
Right, so there's an opportunity to go back to the Environmental Review Committee with an initial study to make a determination whether the MND or EIR would be made.
That's correct.
And I think that with the staff report, the way I read it was not necessarily, it was probably poorly written in that it presumed an MND would be done. And I think that's likely because that is what is usually done on these types of projects. But, yes, that would be a determination that the Environmental Review Committee would make.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. That's all I'm, you know, trying to get at. All right, so I'm done with the overhead and I'll get to my points here. So here's my overarching point. You know, I've supported this project. I still support this project. And I would be willing to pay a lot of money, actually. However, you know, my four council colleagues have gone before me and I think that there is no, there is no vote. There's no appetite to spend 5.8, 6.4, you know, more, as one of the commentaries from the public stated. You know, money is no object, you know, this is, you know, I think that was wise, you know, listening to this on the dais. Costs are always a consideration. And given the fact that we have gone through this exercise of considering, you know, various alternatives, you know, I'll be very honest as well and say that, you know, earlier in the evening, I kind of questioned the wisdom of that. And I thought, you know, it's going to be an on-off switch. But actually, no, I think if we have majority support at least for option D, then I think we should go down that exploration and take a look at what we can do there. However, if I had just started and hadn't heard the input, I would say, you know, with regard to a fence or a wall, the people between Blaney and East Estates should be the ones that decide. And to Councilmember Willie's point again, with regard to kind of this, there was this intractable tension between, well, you don't want to force your neighbor to do what you want to do. And, well, at the same time, you don't want wall, fence, fence, wall, fence, fence, wall. I mean, so those are at odds with each other. And so the way I had resolved this initially was just to say that, well, if there are 25 households, we just had a vote of the entire city with regard to storm drainage fees. I'm sure our city clerk can conduct a legitimate vote of 25 households to see if they prefer a wall or a fence. So that would have been my suggestion. The other primary component of what I had initially thought of was that, you know, look, you've got people along Fairlawn, along Los Andes, you know, you've got the four houses, yeah, at De Palma as well as Lozano Lane. You've got a lot of people that if you were to give them some funding, they could probably figure something out, you know, within, you know, the strictures of not just our planning requirements, but also, you know, just, you know, general aesthetics of the neighborhood, that could really use, you know, some funding. So what I would have done if we were to go, you know, essentially all in with option A, as well as with a vote on what to do with the Lamar alignment, was to suggest that we add to the motion about $500,000 to be basically distributed to the neighbors, whether you say that there are 60 of them or 80 of them. And then we would have staff coordinate a process. And I would have suggested that we have a two-tier process where a design is done and we basically divide the pot of money by the number of households. And people who apply can apply for up to that much. And then the staff would evaluate and grant. And then after the project was done, whatever was left would be divvied up in the same number of households. And, you know, people could have another, you know, stab at the pot. So that would have been my suggestion. However, I heard, you know, all these comments from council and it looked like we were really much more gravitating towards option D. And so, and then I heard Vice Mayor Chow. And I want to say that I have incredibly tremendous amounts of respect for Vice Mayor Chow's approach. You know, and I wish that we were, as a group, up to the task of being that analytical. But I do have some issues with, you know, qualitative statements like, "There was an accident, build this trail." "There are schools, build this trail." You know, I think we really do need to be looking at quantitative metrics. And one of the things that I heard in my recent travels was, I met with a Parks and Recreation Director back where I'm from. And he said, "Well, you know, before we made this fantastic 100,000-square-foot recreation center, we conducted a statistically valid survey of precisely what people want." And I feel, you know, that's music in my ears because, you know, it's one of these things where you can kind of intuit the relative accuracy or truth of particular statements made in a qualitative manner. But it's not until you really go out there and figure out, okay, where are these students going back and forth? What streets are they taking? What would help them in terms of, you know, going back and forth? How many people go to the library? I mean, is it going to be a dozen people that we help every day? Or is it going to be more like 50 or 60? You know, I think, you know, it's really good to ask the questions, but I think it's less valid to say, you know, it's good to do this and I love the library, I love the schools, let's build a trail and because people will use it, ergo, it's good. Here's $5 million. You know, I think, you know, it's just good to take that stepwise analytical approach to things. So, another point on option A, you know, I personally find as a policy matter, ADA compliance is very important. So I think that with option A and B, we do get ADA compliance because the trail is paved. But again, you know, if we're not going to, if we're not going to be able to stomach the budget for it, then I think that what we can do, you know, listening to Vice Mayor Chow talk about, and I think, you know, personally, you know, another qualitative opinion, I think our points are completely legitimate. You know, I think if you really study the traffic patterns around the tri-school area near Cupertino High School and Montevista, you would find that the money spent on road improvements is probably dollar-for-dollar a bit more efficacious. And so my idea, which really kind of gave me hope for a unanimous vote, if it's legal, is I thought, let's say we take $2.2 million for option D and instead of divvying out $500,000 to the residents, we divvy out $300,000. Kind of same format with regard to landscaping and potential fencing or other improvements to their properties due to the privacy issues. That's $2.5 million. And we're coming from a place where, you know, personally, I would have been willing to go up to $6 million tonight. But, you know, we don't have the votes. And so I think to myself, can we basically make a commitment to take another $2.5 million and say, look, we're going to put those into the improvements. We're going to do it in analytical fashion. And we're not going to spend a dollar of this money until all of this is ready to go forward. So, I know it's late. You know, I had a little bit of a question as to whether I'd go ahead and just make the motion outright. But I think I've pretty much set it up. Let me just finish by making that motion. And I'm happy to open it for discussion.
Say something before you make that motion.
Sure.
So I think I showed the collaging chart, right? So, and many, many people here today supporting the trail even mentioned the near misses being hit. And the bicyclist, the bike shop owner says that they see that every week, three to five incidences, just in his shop. So in good conscience, are we ignoring all of that? Because if we move forward today, every dollar staff would spend more time on this. Every dollar, every minute we spend on this project is a dollar a minute we are not spending on improving the areas where collaging actually happened.
I'd love to get your vote for a unanimous vote. But let me just say...
I would like to see is, okay, like the mayor said, Lamar is so dangerous. We want more people to ride bikes on this trail. But if Lamar is as dangerous, how many people would actually risk other streets to get to the trail?
Right.
So what I would like to see is, let's improve Barcelona and Finch. Let's improve the connection from the trailhead to Eaton. Improve Rodriguez. Because Rodriguez, my son used that to go to. So can we improve these trailheads first?
Okay, okay, okay.
And then I would be willing to put more money on this.
Let me just say that, you know, IU Stevens Creek Trail, Santa Mosquinha Trail, LaScado's Trail, everybody, I should say everybody. People are willing to ride to a trailhead on a bike lane as long as, you know, there's some trailhead to ride to. So the fact that you have to ride on Calle de Barcelona after you exit Creekside Park, yes, it's not ideal, but it's something that people are willing to do.
Okay, well, let me tell you where I think that is. Yeah, thank you very much. So where I think I'm at on the decision tree is, in an effort to get your vote, Vice Mayor Chow, I was trying to see if we could get funding for what you're trying to do. But if essentially what you're indicating is that you wouldn't support it, it would still be a split vote and I might even lose a vote or two in that process, then I think I could just go forward and put forward a motion for option D for the Regno Creek Trail. So, I mean, I think it's a matter ultimately, you know, of counting to a majority. And if you don't have the majority, then I think the points have been made and, you know, I respect them. you know, I, I respect them. But, you know, like I said from the outset of my comments, I'm trying to get to unanimity. And I think that we, we could lay out a roadmap for a practical way of going forward and sending your message. Because believe me, your message has been made very clear, okay? You may not think that it's been made clear, but I, I, I think, I think the intelligence of this community is high enough such that, you know, they're very aware of the fact that you're cognizant of, of, of practical efficacy.
Like one of the speakers said, the blood will be on our hand. So the people who are trying to get to the trailheads riding on this current unimproved streets, if people get into accident, get killed, get hurt.
Right.
The blood will be on our hand. They would be falsely thinking it will be safer on this.
Right. You know, look, I, you know, I went to the same school as that guy, and, you know, I think it was wrong for him to say it. I, I don't think it was necessary. But I, I don't, I don't think you need to, you know, bring that up. I, I mean, look, you know, it's, it's about a constructive conversation, you know, we could certainly get to a point right now where nothing goes forward. And I haven't attempted, I haven't attempted to push forward option A, you know. I, you know, I, I've been all about trying to compromise at a midpoint and, and get something that a very, you know, significant sector of the community has worked on, and, you know, that I personally thought that was a good idea. I, I've tried to, you know, get all the various, you know, pressure points. I still think that one residence along Blaney really requires that attention, you know, and in terms of the, the quantitative metrics. Let me just go, okay, let me just put forward this motion, okay? If, if that's okay with, with the mayor.
No.
No.
No, it is, but just let me say one thing.
Okay, sure.
About option A or B. If option A or B would increase the usage, especially to the library, because it's paved, you know, I, I could support that. Because my main, big concern of mine is, how do we avoid spending that $1.5 million on parking for the library expansion? And, you know, I think if we build a better trail, you know, we'll mitigate, we'll mitigate the library traffic a little more. So, I mean, I, you know, I would love if we had the money to do the most expensive one. I'm not, not sure we do.
A and B doesn't include alternative four, right?
Right.
So there is no alternative when it's dark, when the trail closed?
Well, there's still the road that people are on now. It's not any more option, you know, four or five is not going to make it any better.
Then again, we are putting children in more danger than they are today. Because they will be so used to riding on trail, but then when it's closed.
I disagree with that narrative completely, so anyway.
They will be riding on something unfamiliar and more dangerous.
Yeah, you can bring your motion now.
Okay, so if we can bring back the overhead.
How about, can we consider another option?
Well, let me bring the motion first, and then you can shoot it down if you can. How about that? And then we can.
I'd like to separate into true health of the trail.
Please let him do his motion.
And, and I'm going to preface this by saying, I also have written up an option A motion as well. I move that council, one, direct staff to proceed with trail improvement option D of the Regnar Creek Trail design as attached, as described in attachment G of the materials associated with this agenda item nine, not association. Two, allocate an additional $300,000 in excess of the cost of the selected option for landscaping or fencing for homes adjoining the trail to address privacy concerns. Three, adopt draft resolution 19-115 amending the fiscal year 1920 capital improvement program budget to increase the budget to perform design and environmental clearance services from $538,000 to $813,000. Four, allocate the amount of $2.5 million towards other on-street bicycle and pedestrian improvements utilizing statistically valid metrics for determination of optimal projects for maximizing safety in a cost-effective manner. And five, condition spending of any of the allocations within this motion upon the readiness of all of the projects covered herein to proceed, including compliance with statutory environmental review requirements. So that's my motion.
So does the 300,000, that actually has to be spent. It's not, you can take it and say, okay, I'm okay with the trail, just, I'll take the money instead.
I would just say, you, look, just for the sake of easy math, if there are 50 households along the alignment, then you're basically saying there's $6,000 available for each of the houses. So you can apply for up to $6,000. If people don't apply, then that's your excess spot, excess pot of money. And I was suggesting that we have another round after the alignment is made, because people might have a better idea of what they want in terms of privacy considerations after they actually see the physical trail. But that was just my suggestion. The $300,000, as, as I'm envisioning it, is not something that we definitively have to spend unless all of the residents along the alignment decide to make the maximum amount of dollar improvements.
Right. I, I'm just not, you know, the, the residents along Lamar are much more affected than the residents along Fairlawn.
Which is why we have staff evaluate it and get a sense of, you know.
Okay.
So can, can you just list those numbers again? So you're saying 1.9 million for option?
It's on the screen.
On the screen.
So, so option D is $2.2 million. I'm suggesting that we allocate another 300,000 for residential, you know, improvements for privacy purposes.
Well, I'm confused about this item four. It says other on-street bicycle, are these the intersections that Vice Mayor was saying?
In addition to.
Yes. Those are the street improvements that the Vice Mayor was indicating, not, not those specifically per se, but after the study, you know, allocating that same amount of money that we're putting towards building the Regnar Creek Trail, towards improvements that after.
That's leading to the trail.
Right, leading to the trails, leading to the schools.
So tonight, we're talking about 1.9 for D, we're talking 300,000 for excess, we're just talking 813,000 for the 19-115, we're talking 2.5 million toward the other ones.
We're talking about, about 5.2 to 5.3 million, because we've already allocated the 530,000.
I can't swallow this. I mean, we have a bike plan. We're, we're trying to, what's agendized tonight is the Regnar Creek Trail, right? And, and that's the thing we've studied. If, if we were to say, okay, well, let's put some more money in the budget for other unspecified bike improvements, I think that ought to be agendized, and we ought to talk about what that is. It's really hard, I think, to score these things, right? When, when we, when we did the 2016 bike plan, we were pretty deliberate in sort of taking a holistic view and taking the data. And yeah, we did, based on council priorities, we did reprioritize some of the things. But I think, you know, 200, 2.5 million here and 2.5 million and 300,000 here and there begins to add up to real money. And I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, if we spend one, if we allocate 1.9 million, I'm perfectly willing to have, you know, us look at other parts of the bike plan. But there is already, we already have this process, right, where, where staff is bringing these things forward to us. We did our budgeting in June, right? And we talked about how much, and the, the order of projects that might be coming to us. We also have our hands full with those, those projects that would receive some, some funding from Apple, right? And so, I mean, it's not like we're, we're not moving on other fronts too. But I just, I, what I'm, what I'd like to know is, you know, to Darcy's point about the, the 300,000, for, for what's in this budget, the 2.1 million, and say we take away the, the on-street alignment, so we reduce what, that by 175,000. So now we're at about one, we're at 1925.
1.925, right.
So what I'd like to know is, for the fence treatment there, what kind of a great fence or, you know, what sort of fence are we talking about? In, in this matrix, right, the amenity and cost comparison, you had the, the wood fence. So like, how tall a wood fence is that? How good a wood fence is that? And would everybody get that fence? You also talk, can you talk to us about the improvements on Lozano de Palma, right? Are we, I'm, I'm assuming, I, I was a little concerned when John talked about this idea that, well, you can't have, you know, it's funny to have a concrete wall next to a wooden wall. I guess if it were me, the wood allows the flexibility for a resident to put a gate in, right? Even though we might not sanction it or whatever. You do that. If you put up a big concrete thing, then getting a gate in sounds like a, like I'd need a stonemason or.
Right, yeah, I mean, because we wouldn't.
That'd be really hard, right?
Yeah, we wouldn't facilitate gates.
So I understand, but to the, to the sense of, okay, does the 1.925 here get us a great barrier that residents will appreciate? Or is Darcy positing correctly that we need more in order to do a satisfactory job? And with particular consideration to that area that's so difficult in the Lozano, Lozano area, right, De Palma area.
So option D is 2,600 feet of wood fence, seven feet high, and we're estimating it's about $50 a lineal foot.
Okay.
Is where we're at there.
Is there any money in this 1.9 for some special treatment for those homes that are, where we have so little?
Yeah, Lozano, we just have a $40,000 placeholder.
So we do have some?
Yeah, there's a $40,000 placeholder in that area.
So the question is, is that enough, right?
No, it's not, because my very first question had to do with a different area along Los Andes as well as Fairlawn. So I think people, if they want to grow real tall bushes in their yard, then they should have that mechanism for doing it. So that, that's why I was suggesting that allocation.
Even, even, I mean, if you do a seven-foot fence, that's pretty big.
You're talking about taking away the fences.
Right, we're not, but we're not talking about putting a seven-foot fence all along Fairlawn in the north-south alignment of the, of the trail.
Yeah, I thought we were.
Yeah, that would, that would do the majority of all the fences.
Not, not along library field and along City Hall. On the private property, you're talking about putting seven-foot fences over there.
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking about.
If that's not sufficient, if people feel, okay, my second floor window can be viewed, but if I had, if I had the right foliage, it could grow up to 25 feet. That would do the trick for me, and it's on my private property. I think that's something that's a legitimate consideration for people to want to look into. And, and, you know, the fact is, we are putting more people, you know, maybe not right next to their house in that case, but right across the creek from there. You know, some people say, look, if you stand in the library field, you can already look into some of these windows. Fine, that's true, but we are putting more people with the Regnar Creek Trail along their alignment. So, so that's why I think, you know, just, this is a bit more of a democratic way so that people can apply. And then ultimately, you do have, I, I mean, I don't want to look at every application from a council perspective. I, I think staff should be looking at it and going, hey, look, this is a reasonable utility, you know, and.
No, it, it would be wonderful to be, you know, the reasonable accommodations that we can and have the dollars to do it.
So if, if I could toss one of the, so you said for Lozano, $40,000 is the bucket. You also said the concrete-type wall, $500 a lineal foot. 40,000, that means 80 feet. I'm thinking that, that distance for those Lozano houses is three times that, so the 40,000 would have to be 120,000.
No, 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 they're not putting a concrete wall in front of those houses.
The picture, I think it's in Darcy's thing here.
It was a glass wall, right?
That was like glass.
Right, now, now that's the, where I'm going with the question. The 500 that you said for the concrete as opposed to, I think. Did you get?
Yeah.
There you go. Actually, this one's, I think, a little bit more appropriate. So what, using your expertise, what cost per lineal foot would you think? Because I want to be sure we have appropriate money in there for Lozano Lane to cover what I think is going to be 80, 80, 80. 300, I think, probably covers that, 300 lineal feet?
Yeah, I know, it's 400 feet from Lozano all the way to, to Palma. The, the whole reach is 400 feet. So even if it was, say, half of that.
But, oh, half of that, yeah, because the, the house of four is set back considerably more, and it had the car that was parked in front of it. So I'm just capturing up to the power pole, which is essentially up to the power pole, which captures those two houses with the short setback for which they've been generous enough to give us an option to look at. So what would you guess the cost per lineal foot of something like this? We were talking 500. Is this maybe $700 a lineal foot?
You know, we, we, this, this should be able to be, be built for 500 as well.
Good, okay. So, so 40,000 gives you 80, and if we're talking three times that, so 120,000. So you've got 40. So if we were to take another $80,000, when we're talking about this significant of an impact and say, well, 1.9 million plus 80,000 to, to this very sensitive issue, you know, I would, I would, I don't want to leave them, you know, with this 40,000, which isn't going to, you know, provide what they need.
Well, we don't know. It, it might work, but it kind of, I think there's this part where the neighbors all ought to get together and figure out if there can be some uniform solution, right? And, and, and talk to the city and look at different options and settle on something, hopefully, that works.
Well, this is unique and very bracketed.
Yeah, yes, it is.
So.
Because of the particular thing, which is these houses face.
Right.
The trail. With, with a little, with little setback.
Right. And so, then I, I'd like to at least toss out one other thought, and that is, you know, the 2,600 feet of, of wood fencing, I think, is pretty reasonable. What's the dollar value of that 2,600 feet of wood fencing?
Well, it's, it's $50 a foot, so what would that be, 130,000?
Okay, so, so now keep that 130,000. My message that I would think to the residents and everybody is that we're not going to leave them hanging. You know, privacy is one issue, but they also talked about crime, and whether or not there's going to be people somehow being more accessible to their property. And with the wood fence versus the concrete, which has proven to be fine over there by Creekside Park, either with, that we already did. So with that being said, the, the 1.9, the, the option D proceed, the sheriff and all the residents are monitoring, and we're keeping track. And if over the course of two years, crime is this monster that comes out of, you know, wherever, and the wood fence truly does need to be made, the concrete at that point in time, yeah, we're out 100,000 because we had done it with wood and, and for the residents to address the crime problem. I'm thinking that it's not going to surface, but I want the residents to realize they're not going to be forgotten, that we're still here. Where would that money come from for the wall? It would come from other bike projects. I mean, bike and ped community has got to help us put the money in the places that it's needed. And right now, they're saying Regnar Creek is where they want money put, and we're doing our best to accommodate that. If it winds up that the residents are in fact seeing more crime, and we did need to go down this, this concrete wall approach, that money has to come out of other bike, ped project that we would have. It's not fair, fair, in my view, it's not fair to go to the community and say, well, we need another $2 million to build this rest of this concrete wall without impacting, you know, the other bike and ped projects. I mean, we have to be fair to the entire community. So I'm just putting that out there as verbiage that I think we're going to find that it's going to be fine. But I want the residents to also have a peace of, a peace of mind that we are going to be here for them.
So I didn't think that concrete versus wood was necessarily related to crime. I thought it was, the concrete wall is more of a sound wall than a, than a wood fence. Is that not true? Is the, I mean, if somebody wanted to scale a seven-foot wood fence versus.
Is the, I mean, if somebody wanted to scale a seven-foot wood fence versus a seven-foot concrete wall, I mean, they could do either with a ladder, I would presume.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, that's, okay.
There's just more security to it, I mean, it, it would help us sound, but mainly security.
Okay.
Yes, if I could just provide a point of clarification on the budget. Um, currently only five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars or so are allocated to the Regnar Creek, uh, feasibility and design. Um, the item before you asked for an additional two seventy-five, but the two-point-one million, the original budget for the project, has never been allocated. Um, so just wanna make sure that, that's clear.
Right, yeah, the motion today is just for that.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, Darcy, I mean, yeah, maybe that's what we should do.
So, I, you know, I can, I can modify my motion to, um, to remove items number four and five, and that would be, uh, effectively supporting option D.
Can I ask a question? Um, your proposal, three hundred thousand for residents to apply, would that, would the Lozano Lane residents be able to get more budget? Is there a limit for everyone?
I only made a suggestion as to how it would be divvied up, if they, i- i- if, if the feeling is that.
It's not fair if it's the same.
Right, I mean, if the feeling is that Lozano Lane requires a, a larger allocation, um, because it's a, it's a more serious, you know, impediment or intrusion on, on their privacy, um, then I would just leave that to staff. You know, everything I said outside of the verbiage of the motion, I think, is just a suggestion as to how it might be allocated. But I think, I think the money should be set aside, um, to deal with not just the Lozano Lane, as well as De Palma, but the ones that are along Library Field.
I do support your original, uh, motion, I appreciate that you put in two and a half million dollars to, for the other, um, bike project, because I cannot in good conscience support this project, knowing that the path leading to this so-called, uh, off-street trail is, they are still dangerous.
Uh, if you can get a third vote for it, then I'll go ahead and, you know, add back items four and five.
Because I think there will be money for the other bike-ped projects in the future, but this is not, not that time.
Right, well, you know.
But then would the city haven't, uh, put any priority on these?
Well, let's ask city staff.
Yeah.
If you are in fact doing option D for Regnar Creek, do you have staff to be looking and working on these other important intersections that you would then be coming back, maybe with the next budget in next June, and say, here's the solution for this intersection, here's the solution for this intersection, this is one point five million, this is one point two million? Do you have staff, or are you gonna come back next June and say, we haven't done any work on anything other than Regnar Creek?
Well, yeah, we're working on a, a host of, of projects, but our, our plate is, is full. I mean, we've, you know, I, I mentioned when I met last, how, what I saw coming at mid-year for Stevens Creek Boulevard, and then the, the next fiscal year to finish up Stevens Creek Boulevard.
And, and you're also, you're also working on, to finish McClellan, right?
Well, then, then McClellan, and then, you know.
And Bob and Mary.
Then there's, there's the Apple Projects as well.
There are like sixteen projects total for this year. So can you take on this project, Regnar Creek Trail, with so many remaining issues? Without delaying all the other projects? I feel like McClellan has been delayed, so.
Yes, but, yeah, yes.
The Eastman, I looked at the minutes of Bike-Ped Commission, the Eastman issue was, um, talked about at the end of two thousand seventeen, and now it's almost the end of two thousand nineteen, it's still the same issue. It hasn't made progress.
But, yes, Regnar Creek Trail is on our schedule.
Okay, let, let me ask you this way, will you make a commitment to us, to work with us outside of the confines of this motion, as it stands with items one through three in the motion, um, to put projects on for the next year's fiscal budget by June, so that we can identify a roughly equivalent amount that we would wanna put forward in our next year's work plan? Can you make that commitment to us, that you'll, in good faith, do your best to, you know, in, in, in the manner that we described, right? You know, using numerical metrics and really figuring out where our students are going, you know, to and from, and what would be the most efficacious in terms of alleviating the safety concerns, as well as the congestion issues?
Yes, I mean, we, we wanna propose the, the best, the best projects for council to consider, so yes.
I wanna also say, there's, I, I skipped a bunch of comments, but in, and for the sake of time, I thought what Vice Mayor Chow said with regard to the idea of outreach is, is really critical. We have this McClellan, you know, project right now, someone was hit yesterday, and I think that if we had really good outreach to our community, you know, even signs that said, hey, look, be careful, you know, there's a very significant structural change that's being made. I think our students, our parents, our other drivers could be just that much more aware. And so, you know, if we could, and I, I apologize, it's a completely different gear, um, but if we could, you know, do that, I mean, it's not just good PR, it's also really good rollout, especially given the fact that this is a delayed project, right? This is supposed to be done before the start of school. And so, I mean, I think if we're gonna delay it, you know, a good two months into school, we should be taking those extra efforts to make sure that things like that just don't happen. I know it's very difficult, it's very difficult to.
I, I don't think staff thought they could reasonably, I mean, yeah, I guess if everything went really well, right?
Yeah.
Um, maybe it could've gone, but then they ran into these issues with infrastructure that they.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not gonna let them off look like that. I mean, I, I, I think, I think if we were promised a deliverable by the end of the summer and, uh, before the school year started, then, you know, I, I think lesson learned, you know, we go above and beyond in terms of trying to alleviate the effects of, of not delivering on that expectation.
Well, what would you have them do that they haven't done?
Talk to parents, put up signs.
Can we get back to this agenda?
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, I have a motion on the table, no one has seconded it.
Oh, I seconded.
Okay.
Wait, wait, can you repeat it? Is this the one with or without the two-point-five million?
This is without, without numbers four and five, but with a commitment from staff to.
Can you show the motion again?
Without the two-point-five?
I, I, I will, uh, go ahead and put it up, my, my battery ran out, so, let me just.
And, but actually, I would like to get some commitment from staff with, I think, almost fifteen or sixteen bike projects this year. I would like, huh? Nineteen projects, bike project this year. My concern with going forward with this project is, this project has been kind of absorbing a lot of staff time, with, whether you admit it or not, I think it's delaying all the other actually critical, more important bike projects that will actually reduce on-street bike accidents. So can we please put more emphasis on, um, projects that actually reduce existing roadway safety?
Oh.
In terms of priority, don't come back and say there are all these other reasons we cannot do it. Because I always find out that there are all these other reasons, other project can be delayed, but somehow this Regnar Creek Trail has so many issues, just continue to keep going forward.
Sorry, okay, uh, did you have something quick?
Yes, very quick. Uh, if you remember, I raised this, um, heritage trees question, and no fence can be built on my De Palma Lane, um, backyard. Because you, you, you will ruin all the trees.
Okay, so, there's no fence there now?
Yeah, it's no fence, you cannot ra- raise a fence.
It's just the way that.
So what we're gonna do with that?
It's a protected tree.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to raise this issue like fifth, first time.
Yeah, I think you've mentioned, you, you, you brought this issue up to the staff in March already.
Right.
But you have not gotten a response on this issue.
How can we do that?
Three protected trees.
It's three huge redwoods.
All right, thank you. No, the public comment is closed already.
So what's, what's your?
No, 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 where's?
I would like to hear, I would like to hear what's, uh, what's your concern?
Okay, please make the motion.
Yeah, exactly, it's not fair.
Their, their, their homes are affected, so I think it, and then they have brought up issues that the staff has not responded.
Okay, may I stop, stop, stop?
Mayor Scharf, do I have the floor?
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Paul has the floor, thank you.
I move that council, one, direct staff to proceed with trail improvement option D of the Regnar Creek Trail design as described in attachment G of the materials associated with this agenda item nine. Two, allocate an additional three hundred thousand dollars in excess of the cost of the selected option for landscaping or fencing for homes, adjoining the trail to address privacy concerns. And three, adopt draft resolution nineteen dash one-one-five, amending the fiscal nineteen-twenty capital improvement program budget to increase the budget to perform design and environmental clearance services from five hundred and thirty-eight thousand to eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
So clarification.
And to clarify, I, I, part of this motion is a request for the allocation, I believe it was of two-point-two million in the materials that I saw. I, I had heard two-point-one million. This motion does include alternative four, as we, um, previously described it. Uh, and, um, I, I feel that that's a, a priority of, uh, a, a, at least a majority of the council. I, I believe that that, um, set of improvements should be made. And I'll just add somewhat gratuitously, two-point-five million is a lot less than five.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so is there a second?
Option D is how much total right now, one point nine?
I believed it was two-point-two.
It's, the chart for D shows two-point-one with, with the on-street alignment.
Two-point-one including, it's two-point-one including alternative four plus three hundred thousand would bring it to two-point-four million.
So attachment, okay, all right.
So two-point-one?
So attachment G, I, I, I saw it was two-point-two in our materials, um, is that incorrect? If you open up attachment G under item nine.
I, I think that was the previous item, uh, and it was replaced.
This is, this is an old version, right?
Yeah, this has A through F.
So what count, what accounts for the delta of minus one hundred thousand dollars?
We, we had, uh.
Just revised the estimate?
Yeah, we just revised the estimate, that's why we replaced attachment G.
Okay, so then my clarification just makes the total two-point-four million with a base of two-point-one plus the extra three hundred thousand, um, as related in item two of the motion here.
So this includes the on-street improvements?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I, I can't support that, I also think that three hundred is too much. I think if, you know, honestly, you have the ditch, you have the, then a brand-new wood fence on the other side of it. I think that's good enough, and I would focus the extra money in this Lozano-De Palma area, right? And I think something that, like what, I, I could go for, uh, what, what John was thinking, right?
So, so how much are you thinking, around eighty?
An extra eighty, so if it, the placeholder was forty, right, I, I could go for a hundred and twenty in that area.
I, I, I still think that we should allocate some for potential landscaping and fencing improvements that individual neighbors wanna make.
I, in other places, you mean?
Right, if they wanna raise their fence from seven feet higher and get permission, then.
So one-fifty, let's, let's make it one-fifty.
I think it's a can of worms.
Let's make it, let's meet in the middle and, and make it one-fifty.
Yeah, I could support one-fifty, um, just, um.
I'd like to make an amendment that, um, the staff should implement alternative four first, because that's a street, as we know, as the mayor said, is dangerous today, and that we should improve that.
No, I'm willing to.
And then let's put focus on improving, improving the Blaney Crossing and East Estate Crossing first, because that doesn't have to wait until.
Yeah, I wouldn't support either of those.
Staff, are you planning on doing this simultaneously, as described in your materials of improving the streets, as well as the crossings, at the same time as conducting the work on the trail?
Yeah, we could do that, we're not asking for the construction, construction dollars right now.
Right.
But we, but we could do that in, in the future, when we need to move the construction.
The alternative four can be done together with the other bike boulevard projects, right, which we are already doing.
Yeah, I just don't have, yeah, I just don't have the funding to do that right now.
So right now, we, we don't have funding for the bike boulevard from Library to Stone, Sterling Bernhardt. So we had, I think that, the, the council allocated the funding, but the phase one and two went over budget, so now this, this phase, this was unfunded.
Okay. Yeah, and that, and that's a separate issue, but we, we don't have funding for, um, alternate four at this time. Uh, the intent was, is we would come back, um, after the design is complete and ask for funding, um, from council then.
But then, this year, you are planning to implement bike boulevard for the Portal Park area, right?
We're, we're doing the pilot program this year, and at mid-years, I had, had explained, we'll be coming in for the dollars to, to complete the bike boulevard project.
And I said, I understand you mentioned that because it's a bigger project, the cost is cheaper. So, um, if we rolled this alternative four together with that bike boulevard project, would that be cheaper in, in fact? Rather than wait until all the design issues are resolved, permit issues are resolved?
Yeah, alternate four is, uh, you know, it, it's not putting in concrete improvements at all, it's, it's, it's paint signs and, and, and pop-up bollards.
Yeah, it's bike boulevard, I understand, so that's why I'm wondering, it could be rolled into a bike boulevard project that we are already doing this year, then we can improve the safety of Lamar already.
Okay, yeah, please, no comments from the floor.
So is that possible?
Yeah, I would not favor, um, doing that, just because alternative.
I thought you said Lamar is dangerous.
Uh, it is, I, I said that, right, and doing those, alternative four will do nothing to make it less dangerous, so, I, I mean, if, if it's required to, to do alternative four in order to get the motion to pass, I, I'm okay with it, but not, you know, to try to say this has to be done first, or this has to be done second.
Why not if it has to be done? Why do you want to not do something that's easy and, uh, at least can slow down traffic, calm traffic? That we at least improve safety?
Well, I don't agree that, that it will improve safety, I think that's the, that's the reason.
Roger, Roger, you weren't planning on delaying alternative four until the Regnar Creek Trail was done, were you?
No, we, no, no, we'd get funding at the same time.
Just to establish that trust, kinda like you're not planning on making City Hall, you know, until, before the library expansion gets done. It's not one of those, right? I mean, this is gonna get done in a time.
Yeah, and it never was, that's right.
Okay, great.
I, I'm okay with this motion, if we made it one point nine-two-five and we specified the one-fifty was for the Lozano, focused on Lozano, and, but otherwise, I think it's not enough money to do much.
You mean one million nine hundred and fifty?
One, let's see.
The extra hundred fifty.
Two-point-one minus.
You were subtracting out alt-five, I mean, alt-four?
Yeah, exactly.
You wanna get rid of alternative four?
Yes, I wanna get rid of, I wanna focus on this.
Well, then, then you would lose the vice mayor as well, I, I, you know.
We're not gonna have the vice mayor's vote.
Do, will we have your vote now, if we make the motion as is here?
Yeah.
Okay, then, I, can I?
So, wait, 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 without alternative four at night?
Okay, 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 can I have a second for this motion?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, can, can, can we call a question, please? Just for the sake of four-thirty?
I, I need to understand how the one-fifty is spent. How are we allocating that?
Yeah, I think that'll be up to staff to decide how to divvy that up, it's not gonna be, you know, divvied equal among all, all the houses.
How about this, how about we instruct staff to come up with a plan for it and come back to us for the approvals of the specifics of the plan as to how it ends up getting divvied up?
Well, you'll see it at the hundred percent design.
Correct.
Okay, and then they'll have to work with the neighbors? Okay, great, so motion second, question's called, mayor?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, for the sake of clarity and for the sake of our audience, could you repeat that motion? At least the add-ons at the end?
It's as it's written on the screen, it's exactly as it's written. Because option D in the staff report is two-point-one million dollars, we're just adding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars excess to work with the neighbors for privacy-based issues.
You talked about including a request for allocation, alternative four.
That's part of, that's part of the recommendation, Kirsten, it's part of the recommendation already.
It is, that is part of D, yeah.
Okay.
That's already a part of the recommendation.
And so, is it one-fifty, it's no longer one-fifty?
It is one-fifty, it was three hundred, we changed it to one-fifty.
For clarity, Kirsten, option D includes alternative four plus the improvements on Regnar Creek Trail as specified for two-point-one million dollars. Plus, number two adds a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for other improvements. And if, uh, Councilmember Sinks wanted to specify where those went?
No, 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 I, I wanna have staff come back.
If you're managing this, I, I'd rather have you, um, work with the neighbors that are most impacted, and then say, okay, well, we have some, we could do some additional things, right, so.
Can I still add, the comment I made earlier that I would like, uh, direction. that I would like direction, council direction to staff that among the nineteen projects that are located, that's on the plate this year, that's focused more on on-street bike paths?
Okay, so the motion's been seconded, and that is not on the agenda, so can we vote on this item?
Although, just for the record, I support what Vice Mayor Chow is saying as a general.
No, I agree.
But not as part of the motion.
Can you agendize it?
Sure, we can agendize that for a future agenda.
Let's talk about it in two minutes when we get to that part of the agenda.
Yeah, we're going to get to that, and I would support that.
The motion carries unanimously.
Oh my God, great. Okay. So, we are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. I will not say anything at this point because it's four something in the morning.
I will not say anything. I'm going to forego my comments as well.
Okay, but I would support the vice mayor's suggestion, request that we put it on the agenda.
And also, I think, and so, okay, so we want to agendize the priority for, for the, for all the funded projects this year that we prioritize on-street, completing on-street bike paths first.
But we went through that effort just a month or so ago.
No, what I mean is, among the nineteen projects, there has to be a priority when...
But we presented that schedule, we presented the schedule and how it's going to be rolled out all the way through 21.
And what I observed from last year was the Regnar Creek Trail somehow trampled the other projects in terms of... And as a result, I feel...
Could we perhaps get a brief update in the next council meeting? Like maybe schedule a 10-minute update as to the timeline and how it's affected by our decision tonight?
And also, Darcy's original proposal is that also include other projects that's leading to the Regnar Creek Trail. I'm very concerned. We are attracting a lot of inexperienced bikers to ride on this off-street trail when the paths leading to the trail are dangerous. So can we, I'd like the staff to bring back pretty soon, at least before this finish. I mean, I hope that in terms of timeline, timeline, we will eventually have bike paths leading to the Regnar Creek Trail finish first, and then Regnar Creek Trail, so that the paths leading to the trail will be safe.
Yeah, I respect what you're saying. We have a full plate with the projects that have already been authorized, and while we'll come back and accommodate whatever requests...
How about a status report?
It takes a tremendous amount of time to come and go through a process to reprioritize, and it does take us away from projects.
I mean, I guess for next year's CIP.
That, exactly, we would do that.
That process will take place, but if you're worried about the ongoing nineteen other or eighteen other projects other than the Regnar Creek this year, we can come back in status in November, early November.
Okay.
I have, I have just a couple of things. So I mentioned earlier that this whole Rena sub-region thing could be blowing up, and I would appreciate, if I'm going back to the Cities Association on behalf of the city, I would like some to have staff brief us on where this thing is at our next meeting and then get a little bit of guidance. You know, we could allocate a relatively small amount of time, maybe 15 minutes, but I would like, would like informed consent on how I represent you, whether we think we're in or out, and so that's a request for agenda item.
Oh, next time, yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then I had, last night in this chamber, we had a full house, and actually quite a few people in the lobby. It was a well-attended night, I got lots of positive comments on that. And that now, that video has now been posted.
Right.
Yep, that's it.
So one more thing, I think I mentioned that earlier. What we are doing today, we were doing today, is adding a CIP project in the middle of the year without knowing exactly how much we already have on hand. If I looked at the chart I have, our expenditure to this year way over our revenue today and this year. And, yeah, maybe we are getting refund from Apple maybe in the future. However, I hope in the future, whenever we bring a CIP request for funding mid-year, the staff should also present what's our available cash, spare surplus every year, and what's the expected expenditure and revenue, so that we know how much money...
Wait, do you mean separate from our reserves, or what?
No, part of the, anytime we are spending extra CIP...
Is this a request to place a new item on the agenda?
No, I think...
I'm just, like, that's, we're having council updates and new items on agenda, so I just...
I'm not asking for new item on the agenda. I'm asking for the staff, in the future, when you prepare a staff report for a CIP budget request mid-year, please include the yearly budget, so that we know.
She wants to be reminded of the annual budget.
What's the potential impact on our budget, as well as upon our capital reserves?
Right, so if you have a million dollars reserve and you're proposing a CIP for...
We can keep spending money.
I'm just saying that, like, we are not agendized a discussion about that now, so if we want to add something on the agenda, do it.
Okay, yeah, we could add that to the agenda.
Otherwise, we could have this conversation with staff after we close the meeting.
Actually, I already had this conversation with Tim Bolden. He didn't do it. I mentioned this to staff, also she didn't do it. So I'd like to get the council's consensus that you would also like to see that in staff report.
Right, we can put it on the agenda.
Why? Why don't we need to agendize?
If we agree that, then we don't need to agendize.
But we can't discuss it unless it's agenda.
We should agendize it because it's a substantive matter in terms of, you know, what kind of procedure. So I will, I will support what you're suggesting, that we have an agenda item to consider the content of the staff report for mid-year CIP projects, so...
And that's fine. We have some light meetings coming up, not like this one, and we have plenty of time to add that on. Not that we want to add multiple agenda items, but we do have time for the next ones that are not going to go.
I don't know, why do we need to agendize this?
And the public might want to discuss it, too.
It brings more focus on it as well. I think it could just be a five-minute...
This is a staff decision, I think.
That's a brief conversation.
This is a staff decision.
Okay, so it's past 4:30. So anyone have anything else? If not...